Regular meeting number sixty-three will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem. President Proton, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, council is appreciated to have my senior Cody back to pray with us. Thank you, senior.
Let us pray together, friends. Eternal God, the members of Columbus City Council meet together in session this evening to consider a great amount of legislation as they approach the end of this calendar year. May your spirit of wisdom and understanding be given to them so that they can come to effective decisions and solutions that serve to better both the city and especially the common good of the citizens of our great city. As they deliberate, help them to consider carefully the circumstances and situations of our citizens, especially the working poor, who struggle with multiple jobs in order to come up with a just and living wage, all the while working themselves to exhaustion in the process. May a new partnership between commercial interests and the needs of citizens for a just wage reach a happy conclusion, all the while seeking to benefit the good of all concerned. Help us to remember that the issues that confront council tonight are serious and have long-range consequences for all concerned. May your guiding spirit lead the members of council and the citizens of our city to a better appreciation of the needs of both business and labor. Help all of us become more aware of justice and fair play as we ponder these issues tonight, and in the final analysis, help us to come to a happy conclusion, beneficial to all, and an expression of goodwill and justice. We also remember in a special way our three retiring city employees. We send them our prayers and best wishes as they move into retirement. We also want to remember in our thoughts and prayers, Chris Bradley and Judge John Connor, both who are recently deceased. May they rest in peace. And in this last meeting of the year, we pray especially for best wishes to all of our citizens celebrating this holiday season. We are thankful for the blessings of the past and look forward to the opportunities and challenges of this coming new year. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, pastor.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Can I get a motion dispensed with the reading of the journal?
Sir.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
This week's communications received by the city's clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
Now at this time.
At this time, we're going to go out of order a bit for our resolutions, and we are going to start with council member Remy.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. I have the distinct honor to recognize the life of Chris Bradley, meteorologist from Channel 10. I'd like to invite Jerry Ravish, Yolanda Harris, Ashley Barisi, Tyler Beckham, and Kurt Ledlow to the podium as I introduce Resolution 0405X, 2018, from the floor, to honor, recognize, and celebrate the life of Mr. Christopher Bradley Kraus. Mr. Christopher Bradley Kraus was born August 31st, 1965, in Indianapolis, Indiana. Graduating from Indiana University in 1987, Chris went on to earn his American Meteorological Society Seal of Approval in 1990. His renowned passion for meteorology led him to forecast the weather in several Midwestern states, including Indiana, Ohio, and Michigan. As a new member of the WBNS 10TV family, Chris joined the airwaves on July 1st, 2006, in Columbus, Ohio, and served as the 10TV chief meteorologist for 12 years. Greatly respected for his work and loved for his personality, Chris quickly developed a strong following on 10TV and social media platforms. His booming voice and effortless knack for connecting the viewers made him number one in the market. A family man to the core, Chris would swiftly slip out of the newsroom after the 6:00 PM news to run home to have a quick dinner with his family. Chris shared a loving 23 years with his husband, Jason Bradley Kraus, and they have two children, Spencer and Maria. Recognized as a leader in and champion of the community, Chris wore many hats, including being a role model for the LGBTQ+ youth. Chris also dedicated himself to being an active supporter of organizations that provided support services to members and allies of the LGBTQ+ community. Chris made it his mission to march in both the annual Stonewall Columbus Pride Parade and the AIDS Walk. Chris loved running and cycling and did so in many charity races, including Pelotonia and Maria's Miles. Because of his dedication to give back, Chris would be counted on every year to be a part of the Nationwide Children's Hospital telethon. On December 5th, 2018, Christopher Charles Bradley Kraus, at the age of 53, passed away peacefully with his family by his side. After a 21-month battle with acute myeloid leukemia, Chris and his family selflessly continued to give back to the Columbus community and beyond by publicly sharing his story and bringing awareness to this condition. Before I turn the floor over to our guests, I would like to first take a moment of silence in honor of the life and contributions of Chris Bradley. Thank you. Jerry, Yolanda, the floor is yours.
Councilman Remy, President Harden, council members, we're so honored to be here tonight to accept this award on behalf of Chris Bradley. Chris loved Columbus. There wasn't a neighborhood he hadn't visited, a festival he hadn't attended, a school he hadn't talked about weather with. So we know that this city gave back so much to him, and he wanted to give himself to it.
And Chris did, and this community has reached out and been so supportive in the love and the support and the kindness and the well wishes and the prayers. We just want to thank the entire community for that because Central Ohio loved Chris Bradley as much as he loves Central Ohio, and I hope that you all know that anyone who came across his path, he loved you.
I know personally, growing up watching him and follow, we kind of followed paths, both of us living in Detroit, it was nice to have somebody from home while I lived up there to watch and a familiar face, and so he served many communities very well, and we are very fortunate to have him here in the city of Columbus. On behalf of my council colleagues in the city of Columbus, it is an honor to recognize the life of such a tireless community servant. I would like to personally share my gratitude and appreciation with the Bradley Kraus family. Chris was a pillar within our Columbus community, and we will all miss him. Are there any questions or comments for my colleagues this evening? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted.
Thank you, council member. If you would also indulge me, we're going to still stay a little bit out of order, and I'm going to go to council member Tyson next.
Thank you, President Harden, and I have Resolution 0401X, that's 2018, and I am going to ask Larry, Tom Katzenmeyer, Larry James, Johann and Yogi Terrell, Nanette Macy-Junes, and all the other individuals who are also working with this team to come up to the podium, This resolution is to express appreciation to Tom, Larry, Yogi, Nanette, for their contributions to iTunes Sing America, the Harlem Renaissance at 100, a year-long collaborative community effort, celebrating the impact of the Harlem Renaissance on the city of Columbus, and to thank them for continuing the spirit of this movement by making it relevant to our time with their efforts to celebrate Black creativity in our community today. Whereas Harlem Renaissance at 100 started with a vision for the future of Columbus, striving to create a city where talented artists flock, galleries thrive, and often colors are celebrated and embraced. Whereas in true Columbus fashion and with the help of Don and Larry James and many civic, corporate, and individual donors, the Harlem Renaissance at 100 brought more than 30 partners, scores of artists, and creative marketing efforts to the table to use the Harlem Renaissance at 100 celebration as an opportunity to support Columbus-based Black artists and organizations. Whereas during the year-long celebration, Harlem Renaissance at 100 sought out to establish lasting relationships between Black artists and galleries, commission new works of art, engage the community in conversations about Black art, and provide opportunities for interactions with world-renowned artists like award-winning journalist Will Haygood. Whereas Harlem Renaissance at 100 supported 12 murals by Black artists in the short north, initiated an annual gallery hop tradition celebrating Black artists, selected five local artists to participate in a trip to Harlem, documented in a series, My Great Day in Harlem. And whereas from the Greater Columbus Art Council's Community Arts Partnership Awards to the Columbus Museum of Arts Art Celebration, and from the Columbus Metropolitan Libraries, Martin Luther King Jr. Library dedication to neighborhood block parties, Harlem Renaissance at 100 brought a fresh perspective of the social and cultural Harlem Renaissance movement to beloved Columbus traditions. And whereas Harlem Renaissance at 100 is a catalyst for a new future in Columbus, providing opportunities for Black creatives to gain national notoriety, helping attract new talent and creating a cultural awakening unique to this time in history and to the city of Columbus. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city, by the council of the city of Columbus, this council is hereby express appreciation to Tom Katzenmeyer, Larry James, Johann, Yogi, Terrell, and Nanette Macy-Junes for the contributions to iTunes Sing America, the Harlem Renaissance at 100, a year-long collaborative community effort celebrating the impact of Harlem Renaissance on the city of Columbus, and to thank them for the continuing the spirit of this movement by making it relevant to our time with their efforts to celebrate Black creativity in our community. And I move for adoption.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. I also just want to share that in The Washington Post, and this was November the 25th, they are highlighting the city of Columbus, and this is, this is the work from the gallery, this is at the museum. This comes from the book that we, iTunes Sing America, by Will Haygood. And if you haven't seen the exhibit in the Columbus Museum of Art, I would suggest to our viewing and listening audience to please go to the museum. As well as in the art newspaper, we are highlighted. So we, this idea that was created in our city has given us national notoriety, and with that, I'm going to now ask Larry to speak, and you can introduce everyone, and then they can also come to the podium and speak also. Thank you.
Councilman Tyson, President Harden, council members, this is definitely have been one of the most extensive collaborations in Columbus on any front any of us have ever participated, been a part of. The Washington Post, that was a Sunday edition, two full pages spread. The New York Times last Sunday in the book review celebrated Columbus again. The Wall Street Journal, the International Section, Art News, on and on, the Seattle Times last week. So I just want to thank this council, this city, and the folks here, and I'll stand down. Thank you.
We're all good. We thank you, we thank you. I do, so two things. I do want the creatives to come up and say a few words about the work. If Yogi and your team, somebody move towards the podium. Thank you.
So my name is Lawrence Lemon. I am a dancer choreographer here in the city. First of all, once again, thank you for the resolution, but also thank you for the opportunity. Thank you, Mr. James, and all of those who came together to make this possible. For me, as an artist, this has truly been a renaissance for me personally, and being a part of this experience has definitely been life-changing, and we're looking forward to the Columbus Renaissance that is going to continue from this effort.
Do you want to tell them about? Okay. One other thing. So today, in The Washington Post, followed up that wonderful two-page spread by telling us that they named us one of the exhibitions of the year. So that's exciting.
And I just wanted to add one thing, that please continue to support the local Black artists that are right here in Columbus. Make sure you go and attend the museum, but also to look through Seabus Harlem 100. That is seabusharlem100.org. You can follow us on the website. You'll find out more information about the upcoming events and things we have. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So, I'm going to give you this. And so first, I move to reconsider, to reconsider by voice vote.
Please call the roll by voice.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Mr. Stenziano?
Yes.
Ms. Tyson?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes, adopted.
Now move for adoption by voice vote.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Mr. Stenziano?
Yes.
Ms. Tyson?
Yes.
President Harden?
Now it's adopted.
Thank you. And now I have another resolution, and it's Resolution 0403X, 2018. I'm going to ask Ms. Nancy Bechtel to come towards the podium, and certainly she can bring any guests with her that choose to come up. And this resolution is to honor and to recognize Ms. Nancy Bechtel for seven years of distinguished service as the Assistant Health Commissioner and Chief Nursing Officer for Columbus Public Health, and to thank her for her service to the residents of the city of Columbus and Central Ohio. And whereas Ms. Nancy Bechtel holds and matches a public health degree in the health services management and policy, and a Bachelor of Science degree in nursing from the Ohio State University Colleges of Public Health and Nursing. She began her distinguished career with the city of Columbus in 2011. However, before coming to Columbus Public Health, she served as the Executive Director of the Central Ohio Trauma System for 13 years, where she was a champion for emergency care in Central Ohio. Her prior clinical nursing career included work as an emergency department care manager for Nationwide Children's Hospital, and as a nurse at Mount Carmel Health System and Grant Medical Center. Whereas Ms. Bechtel's commitment to excellence allowed her to serve the nearly 1 million residents of Columbus and Worthington, Ohio. She led the department's nursing functions, addressed community health issues, and served as liaison with other healthcare, academic, and community partners, and assumed a lead role in responding to public health issues and threats. As an administrator, she oversaw Columbus Public Health's Family Health and Neighborhood Health divisions, whose programs include perinatal and newborn home visiting, injury prevention, child fatality review, fetal infant mortality review, WIC, substance use disorders, the dental clinic and sealants, health equity, and other chronic disease prevention. She also provided significant support and guidance and direction to a number of other programs and interventions, including but not limited to the Columbus and Franklin County Local Food Plan, the city's community garden team, T-21, the legislation to prevent people under the age of 21 from purchasing tobacco products, and the Office of Minority Health and more. And those are the committees that I have worked closely with in those initiatives. Whereas Ms. Beth, Ms. Beth Kowal has earned the respect and admiration of her colleagues. She is a member of a number of professional organizations, including the Ohio Nurses Association, the Emergency Nurses Association, and the Ohio Public Health Association. She also has been published in professional publications, given hundreds of presentations, and received a number of awards, including being recognized by the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation as one of the exemplary public health nurse leaders in the United States. And whereas Ms. Bechtel will be missed for her talent, her expertise, and commitment to public service, she will also be remembered by her quick smile, her professionalism, and her ability to get things done. Now therefore, be it resolved by this council of the city of Columbus, and this council is hereby express its appreciation for the outstanding contributions that have been made by Ms. Nancy Bechtel during her seven years of public service, education, and advocacy to the city of Columbus, and this council thanks Nancy for her service to the city of Columbus and the residents of our community. I move for adoption.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Nancy, I'm one of the few people here who worked with you many, many years before you even came to the city of Columbus, and you'll be missed, and to say thank you. Most people don't know, Nancy went on, even though she's an RN, BSN, and all that, she still went off and became an emergency medical technician, basic, not necessary, but certainly in the area to which she was dealing with on emergency medical care. It's really special. And since my history goes back long before that, Nancy, again, thank you for what you've done with EMS and COTS, and a trauma system that exists today in Columbus, Ohio, is largely because of all of your hard work. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Ms. Bechtel, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thanks so much for the resolution. It's really been a privilege to work at the Health Department and serve the residents these past seven years. Thanks for all you do to help us with our work. I look forward to hearing about the great work that continues under your leadership, and if I can do anything to assist you or the residents of Columbus, please don't hesitate to call.
And lastly, I just want to recognize two individuals that it is on consent, but there are two individuals that passed from this community that really did impact our community in significant ways. The first person that many people may have never even heard of, but his name is Mr. Lawrence Stewart. And Mr. Lawrence Stewart, 30 years ago, he was a family man, a man of faith, and he loved young people. And 30 years ago, when young people, especially people of, these were people of color, were not playing soccer, he had young people of color playing soccer, learning how to play soccer. He was a soccer coach, and I went to the service on Friday, and to see the young people that he had coached, that saw him as a mentor, was pretty astounding. And so it really is, it was important for me to say his name publicly because of the difference he has made in the lives of young people in this community. The other person that I want to recognize is Ms. Ann Nancy Ketheridge Jeffrey. And most people, a lot of people in this room know that name, and I just knew her as Nancy. Nancy has mentored lots of women. She was a woman before her time. You think about all the movements for women today. Well, Nancy was definitely somebody that was always looking out, making sure that women would be able to, to be recognized, to be a force to be dealt with. She started the community, worked one of the members, founded the Community Shelter Board. She was a founding member of Adam H. Sure you know, she and her husband had, were worked with, were focused on mental health, and they focused on the homeless in our community. As well as, you will see, there are many benefactors of their philanthropy in this community. And so I just want to recognize a woman that was quietly getting the work done, but if you had a relationship with her, you also knew she wasn't always quiet when she was with, when she was trying to get something done. She also cared a lot about the Green Lawn Cemetery. So I just want to recognize Nancy for how she has made our community a better place. So, thank you. Thank you. President Harden.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Now we'll go back in order of resolutions, and I'll go to Councilmember Elizabeth Brown. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Mitch Brown?
Thank you, Council President. I would like to have Mr. Eli Smith. I have one resolution this evening. This resolution is 0394X, 2018, to recognize December as Veterans Suicide Awareness Month. Whereas according to the most recent U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs study, between the years of 2005 and 2016, approximately 20 veterans died by suicide every day in the United States. And whereas veterans face a disproportionate risk of suicide when compared to the general population, younger veterans, especially those who served on the battlefields of Iraq and Afghanistan, are at the highest risk for suicide. And whereas the risk of suicide can be reduced through awareness, proper education, resources, and treatment, it is important that our community rally behind our veterans to protect them from such a tragic fate. And whereas Eli Smith is a Central Ohio native and a United States Army veteran that has made it his mission to hike and bike to all four corners of the United States to raise awareness for the issues of PTSD, post-traumatic stress disorder, and suicide in veterans' community. And whereas Eli has been on his 13,000-mile journey since November of 2016, and has set out to accomplish his goal by October 2019, I now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Columbus that this council does hereby recognize the month of December as Veterans Suicide Awareness Month, and expresses support for the members of our military struggling with mental health. I move for adoption.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted.
Mr. Smith, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you for working with me to adopt this proclamation. Yeah, when I, when I started this, I lost a couple of friends to suicide, and I didn't understand why. And I found it surprising that a lot of people don't know that we lose 20 veterans every single day. And to put that in perspective, if I told you that every player in the NFL, the NHL, the NBA, Major League Baseball, and every single player in every team in every conference in NCAA football combined would be lost in a year and a half, that's how many veterans will lose just to suicide. So I decided to do something a little crazy, go to all four physical corners of the continental U.S. My mother had some colorful choice words for me when I first told her what I wanted to do, but no one would help me do this. They thought I was crazy, so I literally sold everything I have. I am unemployed, jobless, technically homeless, but I got some gear in a backpack, went down to Florida, and literally got out, was like, ah, San Diego's that way, and started walking. I walked to San Diego, the Mexican border, and all the way up to Washington. My knees and back had had enough at that point, so I switched to a bicycle, pedaled about 7,000 miles this year, came back home for winter break. It's been challenging. Someone tried to kidnap me in Texas. I've been hit by multiple cars. Mr. Rattlesnake decided to show up in a shower in the desert one time. one time. Gang in San Diego had a bounty on my head, ran into bears, and all sorts of things. But it's totally worth it because as of now, I've received 12 letters from veterans that have come across my journey and changed their mind about suicide. So, I wouldn't change it for anything in the world, and I absolutely appreciate everything that you do here. It is great to be back in Columbus again. I love it here. Everyone knows how to drive. It's weird for me to drive again, but it's great. And I just want to thank you all and all the citizens and everyone here. Thank you very much for being an awesome community.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Remy.
Thank you very much, President Harden. I just want to take a second to wish my colleagues, the administration, the mayor, and all the city of Columbus a very safe and happy holiday season. It's been an honor to serve in 2018, and I look forward to a very exciting 2019. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. We still got work to do, though. Councilmember Page.
Thank you, President Harden. I would like to take this time to recognize the great work of Dana Rose, and I would like to ask him to come down to the podium. And as he's walking down, I would like to ask anyone who is here in support of Dana to please stand. Tonight, I have Resolution 0397X2018 to commemorate the work of Dana M. Rose and to congratulate Dana on a successful career and his retirement from the city of Columbus. Whereas Dana Rose began his career with the city of Columbus on October 20, 1975. Dana worked hard as a development assistant and was responsible for filing court cases on behalf of the Code Enforcement Division. Dana continued to work in the Hilltop Far West area, also doing environmental work, demolition, nuisance abatement, as the code enforcement supervisor, until he was promoted to code enforcement specialist in July of 1999. He then went on to become the code enforcement manager before finishing his career as the administrator of the code enforcement division. Throughout his career, Dana has worked for five mayors of the city of Columbus. He was part of Mayor LaShucka's golf and tennis classic, played drums for the band The City Slickers. You have to tell us more about that. Is a member of the Guild Athletic Club and has been and is a longstanding member of Charity Newsies. Dana is a lover of animals and currently owns a cat named Monty with his wife Anna. He enjoys spending time with his family, traveling, playing piano, golfing, playing racquetball, and collecting donations for Charity Newsies. I now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Columbus that this council does hereby honor and congratulate Dana M. Rose on a successful career, and we wish him the best during his retirement from the city of Columbus. Before I move for adoption, I would like to ask if any of my colleagues have any comments. Councilmember Remy.
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure to work with you over the years. We've had many occasions to cross paths and work on things on the North Side.
Issues in Northland, of course.
That's right, yeah. So, thank you for being so responsive and making sure that things were taken care of and the people of Columbus were served. And it's been an honor to have the opportunity to work with you. Thanks, Dana. Good luck.
Thank you, Councilmember Page. And Dana, thank you for your 43 years of service to this community. And...
I would just like to thank Councilmember Page and President Harden and other members of council, and Attorney Klein over there, working with all you people all of the years has been great. I hope that I've, you know, helped some neighborhoods, helped some communities, helped some tenants over the years, you know, have a better life through housing and code enforcement. Of course, I couldn't do it by myself, and I'd like to recognize my wife Anna in the back there. She can stand there. She is in the middle. And of course, you can't do it alone, and all my code officers back there all through the years, the code officers, the supervisors, the assistant directors, the directors, they all helped. Most of them are here now. Director Shoney and Director Brandon. I've worked with all of them through the years, and it takes all of them. Also, Mayor Coleman, I saw him in the back. Thank you back there. Thank you, Mayor, for all you've done. And the current Mayor Ginther has done a lot for the neighborhoods and a lot for code enforcement. And I think that code enforcement's in a good place, and I think moving forward, it's going to be an asset to the Development Department. I thank you for your kind words. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dana. You can't leave yet. Director Shoney has some additional comments.
So, you knew you were not going to get away without me saying some things. So, it hit me how long Dana had been with the department when I found out that Dana had been here for 10 years when Kevin Wheeler started as his intern. So, and it's always a huge, you always think about it as being a loss when someone like Dana leaves. And his, you know, what has always struck me when working with Dana is his compassion and his desire to see lives better for the residents of our city. And that is what we all strive to be, and that's what we all strive to do. And when I was thinking about his departure, I realized he's not really leaving because all of those folks standing in the back will carry with them a piece of Dana Rose. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for all you've done all over the years, and appreciate it.
Thank you. And I now move for adoption.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted. Thank you, Councilmember Page. President Protem.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight, I'd like to introduce Resolution 0380X-2018 to celebrate Nigerian Independence Day in honor of our Nigerian Americans and their contributions to the city of Columbus. So, I think our guests saw the agenda and decided that they weren't going to come, so I will move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Resolution adopted.
And quickly, announcement on upcoming budget hearings. I will be holding the budget hearing with Public Utilities, Technology, and Neighborhoods committees in the coming weeks. This Wednesday, December 12, at 5:00 p.m., the Department of Public Utilities will be here in council chambers to present and speak to their proposed 2019 budget. Then, the following Tuesday, December 18, at 5:00 p.m., the Department of Neighborhoods and the Department of Technology will present their respective budget proposals again here in chambers. Thank you, President Harden. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, President Protem. I too have a couple of resolutions that I'd like to get to, and I would first like to invite Mr. Mike Nicholson and representatives with the Create Columbus Commission down to the podium. As the Create Columbus Commission makes their way, I have Resolution 0392X-2018 to recognize and congratulate Mr. Mike Nicholson for receiving the 2018 Winter Create Columbus Commission Visionary Award. Mike Nicholson is a philanthropist, community servant, and founder of the Mike Nicholson Hip-Hop Fitness Program that focuses on exercise through dance. Mike leads a team of part-time instructors who teach about 30 classes around Columbus every week with about 6,500 regular participants. Mike supports a long list of charities and foundations, including the American Cancer Society, March of Dimes, She Has A Name, Bessa For Bellies, and Ohio Suicide Hotline, along with many others. So, be it resolved by this council of the city of Columbus that this council does hereby recognize and congratulate Mr. Mike Nicholson for receiving the 2018 Winter Create Columbus Commission Visionary Award. Would any of my colleagues like to add any comments? CNN, I would first turn it over to the Create Columbus Commission.
Thank you very much. President Harden, council members, we appreciate you so much, both with this award and also the Reese Neder Entrepreneurship Award. It's an amazing honor to be able to grow a relationship with you over the years. As some of us are becoming more senior at doing this for many, many years, we're now making way for what is the next generation of the Create Columbus Commission. We're bringing in some new talent. We're bringing in some very interesting individuals, and we're bringing in leaders who understand that they have to get things done. As I move on, I promise you that what has been built and the foundation that you helped create is just getting better every day and every year. So, thank you for that. Also, we could not do this without people like you, and we recognize that without radical collaboration, there is nothing that we can get done. And so, we work with other individuals, such as Mike, and hundreds and hundreds of other people throughout the community, whether it's throwing a fitness festival on top of a parking garage, or just having him come on out and encouraging people that instead of fast food, they want to have peanut butter and jelly sandwiches and cantaloupe. Mike has been a source of inspiration for all of us in everything that we do. And it's individuals like Mr. Nicholson that are going to help take our community with you to the next level. So, thank you.
Mr. Nicholson.
Well, I'd like to say thank you very much for this. I definitely appreciate it greatly, and that's all I really have to say. But again, thank you. I get nervous. So, thank you so much, guys. I definitely appreciate you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I've been in your hip-hop class. You don't get nervous. That's funny. That's in my class.
With that, I move for adoption. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted. As 2018 comes to an end, a lot of dedicated public servants we're recognizing tonight who have given a lot of time in service to their community. Chief among them is our Council Director of Legislative Research, Mr. Mike Kessler. Would Mike come to the podium? I have Resolution 03, and his family, please. If Mike and his family would please come to the... I have Resolution 0393X-2018 to recognize Michael Kessler for his service to Columbus and congratulate him on his retirement. Mr. Kessler's first day with council was on Monday, February 28, 1977. He served council under four council presidents, Maury Portman, Jerry Hammond, Zack Klein, and myself. During his time at the city, Mr. Kessler worked for five mayors, Tom Moody, Buck Reinhardt, Greg LaShucka, Michael Coleman, and Andy Ginther. Mike holds a wealth of institutional knowledge regarding the policies, procedures, and inner workings of this city. It has been a tremendous, he has been a tremendous asset to this council and will sorely be missed in our hallways. And to his family, we just say thank you. Service is about sacrifice, and sacrificing your loved ones' time over these many, many years, we are very, very grateful. So, be it resolved by this council of the city of Columbus that this council does hereby recognize Mr. Michael Kessler for his service to Columbus and congratulate him on a well-deserved retirement. Would my colleagues like to add any comments? Councilmember Remy.
Mike, thank you so much for everything you've done for me personally. I appreciate you stepping in and giving me that wealth of institutional knowledge, letting me pick your brain and understand, you know, the history of this place. That's so important to prepare us for our future. And so, I thank you, and I wish you much success and lots of luck in the future.
Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you. Michael, just thank you for your 41 years of service. As just read in the resolution, the number of mayors, the number of council presidents that you have served with, and certainly their success would not be, they wouldn't have had their success without people like yourself. And so, I thank you for your service to our city leaders. I thank you for the service that you have given to the residents of our community. Many people may not get, may not know you personally, can't come in and say thank you, but behalf of us, we want to say thank you on behalf of them because you've made our city a better place. I want to say thank you to your family because certainly spending 41 years at City Hall requires a lot of dedication. And so, I thank you for your family to allowing him to be able to serve our residents. I wish you the very best in whatever your future endeavors happen to be, but just continue, but just enjoy life, Mike. You certainly deserve it. Thank you.
President Protem.
Thank you, President Harden. And I know we heard about the mayors and the council presidents, but I think underneath all that's all the staff that you've had the opportunity to serve, mentor, and really want to thank you for that. In my two years, 10 months, or two years, 11 months, 10 days on council, I know the impact you have had for the staff while I've served, but also just the legacies of individuals that have had the opportunity to interact with you. So, thank you for giving and being such a great leader, helping mentor, make sure everyone knows those Ts are crossed and Is are dotted.
Any other elected, Councilmember Brown.
Mike, thank you so much. I, everyone has said it, so I will just echo my gratitude. And I know that good ideas are not going to stop occurring to you, so you have our phone numbers. You know where to find us, and we really hope to continue to hear from you, even post-retirement. Thank you for your service.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Council President. Michael, I will look forward to, even though I will miss you, you still coming by wearing the sweaters that you like to wear and reminding me about all sorts of things that need to be done in the city of Columbus. We go back long before I sat on city council, as you well know, and we had a great time working together, and you'll be missed, my friend. Okay? Thank you.
City Attorney Klein.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Mike, I just want to hit on a point that was mentioned in previous remarks about institutional knowledge. When I became council president, it was a time of great transition in the city of Columbus, that Mayor Coleman was leaving, Mayor Ginther was coming into power. Mayor Ginther happened to take a lot of folks from LRO with him that now fill his administration. And so, as a new council president, you know, looking for someone that has the institutional knowledge, the understanding of the city was really important for me, what I thought would be success, that could help identify and lead the success of council. And you stepped into that role admirably, and I'm grateful for your understanding, your guidance, your perspective that helped me in my two years, 10 years as council president be successful, and I could not have done it without you, and wish you certainly the best in retirement.
And with that, we'll turn the floor over to Mr. Mike Kessler.
President Harden, and members of council, and other elected officials. First of all, I guess I need to thank you, Zack, for bringing me back to city council a few years ago. And I would, is Mayor Coleman still in the House? Yeah. He just, he just asked me to remind you all that I taught him everything he knows. No. We do go back a ways, though. Thank you so much for the opportunity to serve you and the citizens of Columbus. I continue to believe that we're doing noble work, and I appreciate all that you do. I'm, when I arrived here, I was a young guy, and there's still a whole bunch of young guys and women here that I think are doing quite good work, as the agenda tonight really points out. So, thanks so much. If I can be a future help to you, let me know. Oh, wait a minute. I meant to introduce my family. First of all, my dear former wife, Janet, my son, Alex, and my daughter, Emily.
Thank you so much. And with that, I move for adoption. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted. I have one last resolution, and I was going to wait till the end of tonight's agenda to do this, but I hear there is family in the House, and so, I'm going to move this up. I'm going to read this from the floor. I'm going to read this from the floor. It is Resolution 0399X-2018 to honor, recognize, and celebrate the contributions of Council Member Jiza Page to the City of Columbus. Could Councilmember Page's family come forward? Councilmember Page began her work with the city as a law clerk in the city attorney's office in May of 2008 before becoming Assistant City Attorney and was appointed to Columbus City Council in January 2015. I'd like to note just a few of Councilmember Page's many accomplishments. Councilmember Page created the Learning Skills to Lift Neighborhoods Grant Program to help revitalize abandoned neighborhoods throughout Columbus by teaching young people and restore citizens' construction skills. As Chair of the Housing Committee, Councilmember Page led the fight against evictions through her work with the Ohio State University and Commissioner Marilyn Brown, as well as spearheading legislation to end retaliatory evictions. Councilmember Page will continue to serve this community as judge in the Franklin County Common Police Court. Her advocacy, her thoughtfulness, and her empathy will be sorely missed by her colleagues. It has been an honor to serve with Councilmember Page. Councilmember Page and I joined this council together, and I would not be here without her, and I am just very grateful. I'm also grateful to Mom and to the family for... Again, service is about sacrifice, and that means time with your family. But I am just so grateful for the sacrifices that they have all made to allow this amazing, amazing public servant to serve. Do any of my other colleagues have comments? Councilmember Brown.
Don't go. I will miss you very much, Councilmember Page. I will miss your heart on this council, and I will miss your intellect on this council. And I'll miss your diligence and stick-to-itiveness that has brought about some really innovative initiatives and has helped get to the root, I think, of some really large questions that our city faces. So, I really... I look forward to your service on the bench because I know you'll make a huge impact, but we will miss you dearly around here.
Jiza, just so you know, you have my phone number. You call me in the middle of the night. Feel free to continue to do so, okay? I'm going to miss you.
Councilmember Remy.
You know, I was secretly hoping you wouldn't win. I told you this many times. But our loss is the court's gain, and I want to thank you for being such a great colleague, very collaborative, very willing to listen and to compromise. But most importantly, thank you for being a friend, and I'm surely going to miss you here. But I know where to find you, and I know how to get ahold of you. So, you're going to make an excellent judge, and I can't wait to see you in that robe. Thanks.
President Potem.
Thank you, President Harden. So, I've been spoiled. I've gotten to sit next to you during my two years, 11 months, and 10 days on council, and it has been amazing. You come from a wonderful family who know how to throw a great party, and really I've always appreciated when I've gotten invitation, more cake than I've ever seen. But as alluded to, your approach, your passion, your intellect, second to none, and it has just been a true honor to be able to serve in that time with you.
Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you, Jiza. I just want to say it has been a pleasure to work with you. I wish you well in your new role. It certainly will be one that will challenge you. I do believe that... I know that you're up for the challenge. I ask that you continue to trust God as you continue to move forward. And lastly, I am very appreciative of the work that you have done around housing in our community, housing and workforce development together to look out for those individuals that certainly needed a second chance, that you found a way to be able to help the young people in our community to get skills that they would be able to use to move forward in their lives. And then, lastly, just the work around just evictions and the retaliatory eviction, and you've been very thoughtful about how to get that done. So, you will certainly be missed by this body in terms of all the work that you have done to move us forward and to move our community forward. So, I wish you well, and may God continue to bless you.
Thank you. City Attorney.
Council President Harden, thank you to Councilmember Judge-elect and the Honorable Jiza Page. Make sure I address you properly since we may be a litigant before your court. Just, you know, and Councilmember... Council President Harden appreciates this. When you're a council president, you know, looking to your fellow council members for support and friendship and guidance is probably one of the most important things as council president. And I know that I can always turn to you for those things. When I think about you as a person, certainly temperament, integrity, compassion, and empathy jump to mind, which I can't think of any better characteristics for someone elevated to the bench. So, I am... Well, it's council's loss and the city's loss. It's really the court's gain. And I wish you the best and know that you are going to be a tremendous judge because of the qualities that you learned from your family, certainly your faith in God and others that is going to elevate you to be a brilliant jurist, but also a caring one in understanding, especially criminal defendants that are before you, and understanding that the empathy of how one may find themselves in that situation. So, I wish you the best, and thank you for your friendship and tenure on your time on city council.
Thank you, City Attorney. During your four years as council member, you've served as Chair of many committees, but I wanted to give the floor to Director Shoney, who you've served with for many of those years.
The council member looks suddenly very nervous. You know, one of the things that I've appreciated about all of our chairs and none more than Councilmember Page is the role of making me do my job better and making our team do our job better. And Councilmember Page is always there asking us the right questions, but also asking what she can do to help, and not just us, but what she can do to help the citizens. So, I'm going to miss her very much, both personally and professionally. I said to her the other day, I actually think I'm kind of looking forward to if I get a jury summons, that if I do, I'm going to say, hey, can I be on... Can I be in her court? I don't think that's how that works, but that's what I'm hoping for. No offense to the other judges by any means, but I just want to say thank you for your partnership and your friendship. It's been a lot of fun, and we've gotten a lot of good work done.
Thank you, Director. Director Collins, would you like to?
Thanks, Council President Harden. Members of council... Councilmember Page, we want to thank you as well with Recreation and Parks. You spent a number of years as our council member for our committee, and we can't thank you enough for the time, commitment, and passion you put in to Recreation and Parks, all the support, specifically to support the APS programs and our Recreation Center programs. You're always there, always active and involved, and similar to Director Shoney's comments, you're always not just pushing us, but asking us what you could do to support. So, thank you.
Mom, would you like to say anything?
Jiza, on behalf of your entire family, I would like to take this public opportunity to say that we are more than proud of you. Congratulations, and we wish you all the best on your endeavors, and thank you for your service to government.
And with that, the floor is yours, Councilmember.
Well, I'm going to talk for a long time because I'm known as the quietest council member, and I figure this is... I can take about 30 minutes, so I'm just kidding. But I would first like to begin by just thanking the residents of the City of Columbus. You have given me the privilege and the opportunity to serve for the past four years, and it has been an amazing experience. I've learned so much about the city. I've learned so much about the needs of our residents and try to, to the best of my ability, address them. I would like to thank my mother, who is an amazing woman. It is because of her that I even went into law and that I understand what it means to serve others and to serve them with grace and humility. And I'd also like to recognize my Aunt Tracy, who is here with us as well. She is one of my biggest cheerleaders and one of my biggest fans, and I tell you, I wouldn't be on council or running for judge without her. To all of my colleagues on council, I cannot thank you all enough. I know we are limited in time, so I won't go around and talk about each of you, but each of you have really contributed a lot to me personally and have poured into me. You are amazing people. You are so intelligent, and I can't thank you all enough. As a resident of Columbus, for your service, as well as City Attorney Klein, City Auditor Kilgore, we have two judges with us who have also poured into me, Judge Paley and Judge Barrows. I thank all the directors, some I've had the opportunity to work with much closely than others, some who know about my love of monster truck rallies, and I appreciate that, and others who know about my love of football and sports. You all just... The work that you do in giving back to our residents is truly greatly appreciated. I will miss each and every one of you, but please know I will not be far. I am just down the street. I'm not moving out of the city. I'm not moving out of the country. So, please feel free to call me at any time. I want to continue to serve this community the best way that I can. I'm in judges' school this week, so feel free to send me a text and figure out what it is we're talking about because I'm trying to figure out too. And again, my swearing-in will be January 11, and I would love for you all to attend as I embark on this next journey of my life. And to President Harden, we began this journey together. We will continue our journey in public service throughout the years, and I appreciate... Oh, my staff! Rolanda and Charles! Sorry, there's so many people to say thank you to. Rolanda has been with me for the past three years and is one of the hardest-working young women that I know throughout the city. And I don't know where you are, but I cannot say thank you more than enough. Charles joined my team very recently and has been really running the entire time, and I just appreciate the work that you've given as well and your energy. And I've had other members of my team that have contributed to just the work that we've done, the many ideas that we've implemented, and I cannot thank you all enough if you're watching on CTV. So, we say thank you a lot here, and I just end with saying thank you. I love you all, and I'm just looking forward to this next part of my life.
Thank you, council. I move for adoption. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Just joking. Are there any comments by our elected officials? City Auditor, City Attorney, I see Judge Paley and Judge Barrows. Thank the members of the Air Commission that are here with us this evening on our final meeting of the year. Are there any requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk? Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Finance Committee ordinance is 3307 and 3317-2018. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance 3094-2018. Economic Development and Small Business Committee ordinance 3469-2018. Public Utilities Committee Resolution 364X, 378X-2018. And ordinances 2976, 3024, 3168, 3200, 3240, 3243, 3245, 3303, 3304, and 3393-2018.
Seeing no speakers on the first reading, the following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read those ordinance numbers into the record?
Resolutions of expression 395X, 396X, 404X, 400, 402X-2018. Finance Committee ordinance is 3134, 3183, 3205, 3213, 3268, 3315, 3318, 3323, and 3455-2018. Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance is 3162, 3163-2018. Public Safety Committee ordinance is 2736, 3262, 3371, 3376, 3388-2018. Public Service and Transportation Committee Resolution 360X-2018. Ordinance is 3055, 3241, 3244, 3261, 3267, 3353, 3387, 3396, 3403-2018. Economic Development and Small Business Committee ordinance is 3251, 3282, 3290, 3314, 3372, 3395, 3398, 3415, 3416, and 3430-2018. Housing Committee ordinance 3265, 3332, 3333, 3367, 3397, 3406, 3407, 3408, and 3443-2018. Judiciary and Court Administration Committee ordinance 3155-2018. Technology Committee ordinance is 3216 and 3402-2018. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 3111, 3105, 3106, 3123, 3126, 3186, 3192, 3193, 3196, 3201, 3246, 3248, 3249, 3306-2018. Health and Human Services Committee ordinance is 3247, 3276, 3338, 3423-2018. Appointments from the mayor's office numbered A0294, 295, 296, 297, 298, 299, 300, 301, 302, and 303-2018.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have no speakers on the consent action portion, but as a general housekeeping matter, since this is the last council meeting of 2018, Clerk, would you please read the numbers of ordinance on tonight's agenda for first reading that have been identified to have second reading waived?
Finance Committee ordinance is 3307, 3317-2018. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance 3094-2018. Public Utilities Committee Resolution 364X and 378X-2018. Ordinances 2976, 3024, 3168, 3200, 3240, 3243, 3245, 3303, 3304, and 3393-2018.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I would now entertain a motion to waive second reading. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. These ordinances will be read during the regular committee reports this evening. May I have a motion for approval of the items designated as consent actions? Please call the row by voice.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown? Ms. Page? Mr. Remy? Mr. Stenziano? Ms. Tyson?
Yes, with the exception of 3155-2018 and 3423-2018, on which I am abstaining.
President Harden.
Yes, consent action carries. We would not proceed with the second reading of 30-day tabled and emergency legislation. The first committee to come before council is the Finance Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Brown. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight in Finance, we first have ordinance 3411-2018 to authorize and direct the city auditor to provide for the transfer of $1,900,000 within the general fund and to declare an emergency. City Council approved a new contract between the city and IAFF Local 67 in November. Although the costs associated with the new contract agreement were projected in the third-quarter financial review, this additional transfer of funds is necessary to meet the provisions in the new contract before year's end. Emergency action is being considered to prevent an interruption in the pay for our firefighters under the obligations of their new contract. Any questions for my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, we have ordinance 3481-2018 to authorize the mayor of the City of Columbus to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Franklin County and JHAC Ventures LLC regarding the proposed financing, development, construction, operation, and occupancy of a multipurpose sports, community, and entertainment and cultural facility, and the redevelopment of the Mahfey Stadium site into a community sports park, and the financial commitments for all parties involved, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance before us tonight is before us tonight as a matter of necessity in order to meet the December 31 deadline set by Major League Soccer to keep the crew in Columbus. I'd like to turn the microphone over to President Harden to speak particularly to the partnerships that brought us here tonight. President Harden?
Thank you, Chair Brown. Thank you for your leadership. I certainly would like to say thank you to Mayor Ginther, to Commissioner Kevin Boyes, to John O'Grady, to Marilyn Brown, to Alex Fisher and the Haslam family, the Edwards family in the private sector, Auditor Megan Kilgore for all your work over the last several And I'll talk about that more, the speed in which folks worked under immense pressure to bring something before this council, before this date, seeing that we had to have something by the end of the year. Your leadership is greatly appreciated. To our city attorneys, Zach Klein, I said the other day, your work several months ago gave the city the room to have this conversation and figure something out so that we could save the crew. And thank you to the Save the Crew movement. You guys gave the energy and the backbone to allow the elected officials, the Haslam family, the private sector, all those many folks who have worked diligently to come up with this great plan for our city. As the mayor and Megan were working on this, this council asked for one thing, which was that when they brought us an MOU, when they brought us a plan, that it would be... they brought us a plan, that it would be, show clear public benefit to our residents. And this deal delivers on that request and more. It keeps our team in Columbus. The other day, Alan Miller, the editor of Columbus Dispatch, wrote that this effort was a true demonstration of the Columbus Way, and I wholeheartedly believe that. So I want to thank all of our partners for their commitment to our shared values. This collaboration will not only help us save the crew, but bring jobs to the city, build new affordable housing, and engage minority-owned businesses as well as the building construction trade. Again, Chair Brown, you getting us over the finish line, getting us here, as well as your many meetings with the auditor as Finance Chair on this issue has been greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, President Harden. Thanks for your guidance and leadership and North Star on the proposal for community benefit. I really want to highlight the tremendous opportunity this MOU presents to leverage $645 million in private investment and to leverage that into public benefit for Columbus residents. Again, this is not just about a professional sports team, although that's important too. This is about economic development, community, and the youth of our city. The Confluence Village proposal is expected to include 270,000 square feet of private commercial and office space that can accommodate more than 1,000, we're estimating 1,300 employees. It will include just under 900 residential units with a minimum 20% being designated as affordable. And then the stadium itself, as Council President Harden mentioned, will be constructed using good-paying jobs with historic commitment to minority-owned and women-owned businesses. That's your economic development. And then community. Last week, we held a public hearing, and I was really struck by, first of all, all the comment we got was positive, which is, never happens. And I was really struck by the diversity of perspectives. The only thing that was homogeneous about the people who came was the yellow and black scarf so many of them were wearing. But they weren't just there to unite in their fandom for the crew. Some of them did come and say, you know, "I'm a fan. I'm here because I want my team to stay." But so many of them talked about the importance of soccer in their lives, and talked about what a commitment the community sports park demonstrated, and just what it means to have the crew here because of the importance of soccer in their lives. There was a gentleman who came from CRIS, Community Refugee and Immigrant Services, who talked about the refugee youth, many of whom are big fans of soccer, who come to Columbus and are just thrilled to see the crew here, who walk into the stadium and see players who are their nationalities, and feel that they see themselves and that they have some leadership to aspire to. And it was really incredible to just hear, whether it was students, or educators, or community members, nonprofit leaders come and talk about the way that this team and the commitment to the sports park and athletics in general builds community. That's why we love sports. It builds community. And then the third piece is the youth of our city. The $50 million in investment that the city calls out in this memorandum of understanding will fund the infrastructure needed, you know, typical of this type of large-scale development. And city dollars will not go towards the construction of the stadium. The city funds will be directed towards that infrastructure and then towards the redevelopment of Mopfre Stadium into the Columbus Community Sports Park, which many of you have read about. As the crew plans for their new home, we are not just preventing the old stadium from falling into disrepair, but we are proactively developing it into a true asset for the area. 200,000 residents live within three miles of the site and stand to benefit from increased access to recreation opportunities through the fields and courts and programming. As we move forward with this process, I look forward, as Recreation and Parks Chair, to working with Director Collins and his team to solicit feedback from residents on how this facility can best meet the needs of the community and make a positive impact, excuse me, for our children. Director Collins, as the Chair of Recreation and Parks, would you like to add comments about the sports park and the opportunity in this memorandum?
Thank you, Chair Brown, President Harden, members of council. Columbus Recreation and Parks is very excited about this opportunity that's available through the Columbus Community Sports Park. As Chair Brown mentioned, it will serve, be able to provide service and park access to over 200,000 residents that live within the radius that is our service area of this particular site. That includes Milo Grogan, Wyland Park, Linden, North Columbus, Glen Echo, Indianola Trace, and the University District. All of those neighborhoods will have immediate access to a new park in the center of our community. In addition, as you mentioned, it will provide equitable, help us provide more equitable access to youth and adult sports throughout our community. We look forward to serving thousands of young people. As I say to our department all the time, we want every City of Columbus kid in a jersey. So we want to see them out at this type of facility. It'll be a huge asset for it. And then in addition to being, to the Community Sports Park being the home of the crew's practice facility, this will also be, serve as a regional destination for much sought-after tournaments and events that we can bring folks from all around the region to Columbus to be together and, for youth and adult sports events, similar to what we do out at Burliner. So we're very excited about the opportunity and what this means for Columbus Recreation and Parks and the residents of Columbus. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Director Collins. Are there any questions for my colleagues? We do have some speaker slips. Any questions first? Okay, we take three speakers, four and three against for any given ordinance on council. So I will go for and against. There's one against, and then unfortunately, we're not going to get through all of the pro speaker slips. I apologize. Lots of interest in this topic. So the first speaker in favor of the ordinance is Mr. Joe Motil. Welcome back to council, Mr. Motil.
Okay, President Harden, Pro Tem Stenziano, members of city council, Joe Motil, 167 West Cook Road in Columbus. I think it's great for the City of Columbus, the Columbus Crew Soccer Team, and all their fans that they hung together, never lost faith, and were able to work out a deal to keep the team in Columbus. But what bothers me, and many others, is that City Hall continues to make deals behind closed doors and then out of the blue at the last minute, make a significant announcement that has a considerable impact on the community. For example, the Northwest Area Sheep Farm Proposal, Lance Hill at Arlington, the consideration of the Rock on the Range moving to Three Creeks Metro Park, the Cleveland Browns and OSU's takeover of Tuttle Park, and the plans to demolish the Route 315 ramp for the benefit of Ohio Health that was being discussed for nearly two years by city officials without a peep. And only two months before the ramp got demolished, did we hear anything about it. So in the past week, the public has been immersed in the unexpected announcement of a new soccer stadium, the creations of Confluence Village, and the redevelopment of Mopfre Stadium into a multi-purpose sports complex for a combined city and county taxpayer expense of no less than $100 million on top of the cost of nine acres of prime real estate taxpayer-owned property. And when the taxpayers see tens of millions of dollars being spent for what is ultimately about sports, then why can't the Columbus partnership, the City of Columbus and Franklin County, get together on a deal in six weeks' time or even six months, and at the drop of a hat, spend $100 million and donate nine acres of publicly-owned land to help provide for numerous other issues facing our communities like educational needs, affordable housing for low income, and just overall poverty? And I would also like to have assurances from the city council and the Franklin County Commissioners that if for some reason, heaven forbid, the crew runs into financial troubles due to lack of attendance or who knows what, that we, the taxpayers, are not going to be held responsible for bailing them out as we have Nationwide Arena. Also, Mayor Ginther was quoted as saying the project would be about more than a new stadium, providing prevailing wage jobs with, quote, "record minority participation." At the request of the President of the Columbus Chapter of the NAACP, and as a member of its Labor and Industry Committee, along with my nearly 40 years' experience in the commercial construction industry as both a worker and manager, I attend the monthly Construction Inclusion Team meetings for the New Franklin County Corrections Centers project. And I was asked to give assistance and input to see that that project's MOU is honored in terms of the suggested aspirational goal of 12% African-American workforce. And over the course of the project, the highest level was reached 8.64%, with the recent number showing 7.6%. So there's obviously a lot of work that needs to be done to reach that 12% goal. And although I can't speak on behalf of the local chapter, I have no doubt we will be a partner in seeing that the mayor's commitment of record minority participation will materialize. So let's build a stadium. And I also wanted to say, enjoy your holidays, everybody. Have a Happy New Year, and I really wish you the very best, Jiza, with your future in the legal system. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Motil. I'm going to go ahead and categorize that as against rather than for. It sounded a lot more like against than, than for? Okay. So, thank you, Mr. Motil. Next, we will hear... Fair enough. And you are more than within your rights to voice them, so thank you. But I am going to allow for a speaker in favor of the ordinance now. And that is Ms. Anita Davis.
Good evening, Council President Harden, Pro Tem, members of the city council, and all of my fellow Columbus community members who are here tonight. My name is Anita Davis, and I am here to lend my voice in support of the proposed legislation to give Mayor Ginther authority to move forward with the plans to repurpose Mopfre Stadium. I'm a proud mom. I'm an avid recs and parks programs user, and I'm here asking each of you to vote yes. When you vote yes, you are saying yes to safe, affordable, healthy, and fun options for the children and families in our community. Children who, like my 14-year-old daughter Isabella and my seven-year-old son Julian, enjoy the programs at CRPD. Families like ours with middle incomes and hard-working, single parents who simply do not have the budget for expensive athletic and artistic programs. So let me just add that CRPD is a single mom's really good friend. You are saying yes to all of us having a seat at the table of whole wellness programs, arts and creativity classes, and positive youth development. Yes to providing nurturing, productive after-school and weekend spaces for active and curious young minds, where their desire to explore and their endless energy can be channeled in ways that will propel them into a positive future, not allow them to slip through the cracks and into harm's way. Yes to helping children and youth develop the leadership, cooperation, negotiation, innovation, and communication skills that will give them the essential skill set to become active and involved leaders, such as yourselves, in this or any other community. Yes to playing an integral role in the creation of this new paradigm of public-private partnership, so that those who benefit from the consumers in our community will also take seriously and commit fully to their role of being mutually beneficial producers for our community, providing opportunities for all of our citizens, especially the most vulnerable. Like all of you here tonight, I want our private partners to truly do good while doing well. And I will stand with you to ensure that they do. I'm a proud, loud, and enthusiastic advocate for all things beneficial to children and families. Not only my children, and not only my family, but all children and families, especially those in our community. My daughter, who was part of a championship volleyball team last year, would love to be on a volleyball team right now. However, she is not. There's no volleyball team at her school, and I had to say no to club play because at $1,900 per season, that does not include hotel and travel costs, by the way. That is simply not in our budget right now. So again, I'm here to ask all of you to say yes to Isabella, to Julian, to all the youth and families of our community who love participating in CRPD classes, events, and activities, and who will benefit from this repurposed Mopfre Stadium. Say yes to those of us who represent this vital portion of the us in Columbus and are not always at the table. Say yes to the thrival of all of us. Say yes. Vote yes.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. And now we will have the speaker against the ordinance, Mr. Christopher Merkel. Welcome back to council. Name and address. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Christopher Merkel, 194 Dakota Avenue. President Harden, members of council, thank you. I essentially concur with the first gentleman who spoke. I am genuinely happy that the crew will be staying in Columbus, and I'm sure it surprises no one here to hear that I am even happier that a housing affordability element has been incorporated into the proposed project. But I am disappointed in the process. I'm disappointed that the Mayor's Office makes a backroom deal that amounts to a capital expenditure that is 125% of the citywide resurfacing budget for the entire year, that an announcement is made at the 11th hour, that a hearing is scheduled for 11:30, a hearing I would have loved to have been at, but by the time it was announced...
It was at 6:00 p.m. It was at 6:00 p.m.?
Oh, no, it was a, it was a play on words, 11th hour, 11:30. No problem. I would have loved to attended the hearing, but I wasn't able to because by the time it was announced, I already had a commitment. If the Columbus Way is in fact that the Mayor's Office makes backroom deals and council rubber stamps them without any meaningful contribution from the public, then I don't think that that way is necessarily something that we should be so proudly touting. And so, because I have had no other opportunity in a public forum to say so, I just hope that when future capital improvements budget hearings are held, that the city will have the decency to respond to people who are asking about crumbling roads and crumbling sidewalks, particularly in my community on the west side, not with, you know, a marginal increase in the resurfacing budget, but with the answer that we decided to spend $25 million building new roads and new sidewalks to put more polish on the pearl in the arena district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Merkel. Next, in favor of the ordinance is Ms. Cassie Dickerson. Welcome to council. If you could say your name and address. You have three minutes.
My name is Cassie Dickerson. Full address?
Yes.
5641 Niagara River Lane.
Thank you.
Yes. Chair Brown, Council President Harden, and the members of council, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. I am a 2011 graduate and women's soccer alum of the Ohio State University, but I am here for something else today. Because the headline is, "We saved the crew," but what we are really here to do is save the community. Since 1999, the crew has played home games at Mopfre Stadium, the first soccer-specific stadium for an MLS team. This began a trend among MLS teams to construct their own venues instead of leasing at other sports, football stadiums. With the proposed renovation of our iconic stadium, maybe we can set another precedent that in Ohio, in Columbus, we don't discard significant pieces of our community. We invest in them. While it is hard to predict all of the benefits this new community complex will provide, we do know many things. We know that nearly 200,000 residents live within three miles of that location. We know that this is an investment in jobs, in economic development, in the strength of a neighborhood, and in the expansion of access to recreation options for youth. Access that we are currently falling short of, especially in the sport of soccer. Without, without access, there is no opportunity. And without opportunity, where does that leave our children? The concept of equality in opportunity has been examined by numerous researchers. Essentially, it shows that an opportunity is a three-way relationship between a person, an obstacle, and a desired goal. However, a person only has an opportunity if she has a chance of achieving that goal. For instance, growing up, I played every sport available in my hometown until I decided to focus on soccer. It just so happened that access to quality soccer facilities and training was hours away from my home. This presented an obstacle. It was an obstacle that my family was fortunate enough to help me overcome and give me the chance for the opportunity to continue to grow in the sport of soccer. See, there is no opportunity if one faces insurmountable obstacles that make it impossible to achieve a goal. That's why the equality of opportunity is so important, so that certain contingencies of our community are not unfairly disadvantaged before they even begin. I don't even know who or where I would be without the impact of sports in my life. And right now, there are kids in our city who don't even have the chance because we do not have the proper facilities to support their needs. That's why I'm here today to support the investment in a community sports complex that will remove some of the existing obstacles and will give these children a fighting chance. So yes, Columbus deserves a crew, but every kid deserves access and the opportunity to a better future. a better future. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you so much, Ms. Dickerson. Thank you. And then our final speaker in favor of the ordinance is Ms. Cookie McIntyre. Welcome to council, Ms. McIntyre. When you get to the podium, if you could state your name and address, and you have three minutes. Thank you for coming.
Cookie McIntyre, at 250 Daniel Burnham Square in Columbus. Thank you, President Harden, and for the City Council to hear us out today. And I am here to speak on behalf of the the new stadium and the new and the new program there. You know, it's funny, because almost to the day in 1998, and I am a an arena resident, made that decision to be in the arena and to make that kind of investment when there was still a hole in the ground where we live now. Actually, the penitentiary was there where we live now. Actually, my living room is probably the electric chair, just so you know. But I was standing on the corner of Nationwide and Front Street, and all was there was this gravel lot, and I was brought by a friend to the middle of that gravel lot. And I looked down, and I saw this disc that had a spike in the middle of that, and it said, "Center Ice, Columbus Blue Jackets 2000." Who knew that that type of of public-private partnership at the time would bring the kind of growth, would bring the kind of amazing things that have happened in a huge way when it comes to economic development, when it comes to what has happened in the arena district, and proud to be there today after all these years? We see the same kind of kind of thing and hope for in the future. Obviously, there's no guarantees, but living through that and seeing that and seeing the progress has been amazing and looking forward to that when we have the stadium downtown. The other thing I want to mention is, I started my company here in almost 30 years ago, and our business is recruiting. We're an international company. We are located and headquartered right here in Franklin County in downtown. And it has been tough when you have economic environments like today where there's a war on talent to bring good people, great people, who can really be a part of this community and can really be folks who would who would actually do some amazing things here. And so we are in the in the trenches all the time in fighting other cities for great talent to come to Columbus, for our tax base to go to school here, to start businesses here, to be leaders here, to be citizens here. And this would be one more amazing thing that we can really showcase, our beautiful city and thriving city of Columbus, to be sure that we continue to grow, thrive, and bring amazing people here. So I just wanted to talk about those things and ask that you vote yes for for our stadium downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McIntyre. Thank you to the speakers for and against. The two individuals who spoke against mentioned a rushed process, and I want to speak to some of their critiques and take council member questions if there are any. Director Shoney, if you could speak to the the process and the MLS deadline and sort of the very quick work that many partners have had to do.
Thank you, Madam Chair, President Harden, members of council. In terms of the process, as was outlined the other night in our hearing, this was a very abbreviated process. I think the partnership has been working as the private sector should in terms of assembling an ownership team. And it took until this fall, when the Haslum stepped forward in partnership with the Edwards family to put together an ownership team that met the MLS's needs. From that point, it was a lot of very, very fast negotiating, design work, technical work to figure out, now that we had the ownership team in place, could the could the ownership team put together the financials on their side to build and fund a stadium? That process took its own amount of time, and then it was they came to the public partners to say, "Here's our plan. Here's what we have to go forward. Can you all put together investments that will allow the city to take advantage of the investment that we're making and pull together the kind of public-private partnership that we all talk about?" That process has been very abbreviated. I would love to tell you that we had had the time to pull this together, but basically the MLS, the team needs to start training in February for the next season. They need to know where they're going to be. And in order to make that happen, the MLS needs to be comfortable by the end of this year that they have an ownership team that has a plan for the future. So that was the that was the hand of cards that we were dealt. The team worked together, I think with the city attorney and the city auditor, and Director Collins and I, and members of council have been scrambling, and I'm very proud of the deal that we put together, and we've tried to be as transparent as we could through this process, dealing with some very tight constraints.
The deadline, given what it was, and the timeline, given what it is, I appreciate the hard work, but I also want to highlight that even with those constraints, we don't sacrifice on the values we wanted to see, and we don't sacrifice on the financials that we wanted to see, and that's one reason that Auditor Kilgore's participation in the MOU was so important. And Auditor, would you mind speaking quickly to -- you mentioned this in the public hearing, but it's worth saying again, the financials of the deal and your assessment of the soundness of the investment?
Sure. Thank you, Finance Chair Brown. I believe it was Mr. Merkel who made some comments, and Mr. Motil with respect to timing. The answer that I offer is, I agree. I wish we had a good bit of time more to be able to do this, especially for the sanity of Director Collins and Director Shoney, to be able to work quickly. However, the circumstances of timing were not the city's choice. We have to respond as good fiscal stewards and as good governmental representatives to windows of opportunity, especially windows of opportunity that generate significant economic benefit to our community. And I would also share a little bit about, you know, as Auditor, I think a lot about the what-ifs. How do we mitigate our exposure to items that we may have out of our control? How do we maximize our return on our investment? Meaning, if we're going to be spending money on a project, we want to make sure that it is bringing back benefits to the community and to the city of Columbus. And also to maximize the cross-utilization, meaning this is very, very important. In the event that soccer is simply not a sport here in 10 years, and I do not believe that to be the case, to be very, very frank, but in the event that simply it is not here and the city of Columbus is is not exposed, the investments that council is being asked to make are to support a development far larger than the stadium itself, meaning maximum opportunities in residential units, commercial office space, and a really spectacular community recreation facility that's going to benefit tens of thousands of people over the next few years. The the ask for the city of Columbus is that we look at this project the same way that we do any other large-scale, and that is through putting in water lines, putting in sewer lines, running roads. And the the closest that the city of Columbus is going to get to a stadium itself are the sewer and the water taplands that go up into the stadium, just as it would a grocery store or anything else. So the capital planning has been in concert with the various directors, Director Collins and Director Shoney, as well as Finance Director Joe Lombardi and my office, and we've been able to respond with much agility and as quickly as we possibly can, given the the information. But this is truly a window of opportunity, and I think hats off to the city of Columbus for responding to a gigantic opportunity for economic impact.
Thank you, Auditor Kilgore. I want to acknowledge City Attorney Klein and your lawsuit for helping to free up the space to get the by the time that we were able to have before before a deadline. Are there any questions from my colleagues or comments? Oh, Director Shoney has another comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's one other point of clarification I wanted to make. In Mr. Motil's comments, it was implied that in addition to the $50 million, there might be a transfer of land over and above that $50 million in value. If there is a transfer of land somehow through working out the site location and land we own over there, the value of that land will be deducted from the city's $50 million commitment. So I did not want there to be a perception either among council or among the public that this was $50 million-plus land. If there is a land port, if there is a land element to the financial deal that's when it's finally structured in its final form, that will be deducted from any $50 million and other investments the city has to make.
Thank you for that clarifying point. Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you, Chair Juan Brown. I just want to thank you, thank President Harden. I certainly want to thank City Attorney Zach Klein. Just from the very beginning, you have certainly been fighting for us to be able to keep the crew here, and I just appreciate your leadership in this effort. I also want to thank Auditor Kilgore for her work, because this did happen pretty quickly. And I also want to thank Director Shoney, I want to thank Director Collins, and I want to thank the private sector for stepping up and ensuring that, one, we would continue to have a soccer team, a major soccer team in the city of Columbus. I too want to thank, and I'm also very pleased that we are going to be repurposing the current stadium. I mean, I really see this as a win-win. It is about the enhanced quality of life for the residents in our community. And so to be able to have a premier arena for the team, and so we're not paying for the arena, just the infrastructure around the arena, but to have that, that again will help us with our economic development, continue to bring people here, just like the arts, et cetera. And then, to be able to have a facility that our community, our residents, will be able to utilize without having to pay these exorbitant fees to be able to play a sport is pretty phenomenal. So I personally see it as a win-win, and I thank everyone that had a significant role in ensuring that we have a major soccer team and we have a facility that it will be, I'm sure, one of the most fantastic facilities in this country. And so I thank everyone for their leadership and very excited about this MOU. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, and I think it's significant to acknowledge the citizens of the city of Columbus. They came together and said, "We want to keep our crew here in Columbus," and they let everyone know that. That kind of passion, that kind of energy, that kind of attitude is what permeates the city of Columbus. And my hat takes off to all of you who were active, involved in making that all happen, from Alex Fisher and all the others who you've mentioned. It would not have happened if we had not had that kind of energy. So I'm very pleased and very happy about this process.
Thank you, councilmember. Any other questions or comments from colleagues or others? Okay. Well, seeing no more comment, I do want to move for passage.
Give it a minute.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have a -- sorry about that. Move to amend as submitted to the clerk first?
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Amended.
And move for passage as amended.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Ordinance is passed. We will -- may I get a motion to recess meeting number 64? Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Council will read momentarily. Regular meeting number 64 will now come to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
We -- can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal? Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
We will now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee. All members serve on this committee. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Before beginning the zoning agenda, I'll briefly explain the rules of council as pertaining to speaking before council on zonings and variances. We permit three speakers on each side, three proponents and three opponents, and we ask that they limit their remarks to three minutes on each side, and we provide an opportunity for rebuttal from the applicant. On the advice of the city attorney's office, we ask that anyone here this evening who wishes to speak for or against any council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. Please stand. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Answer, I will. Thank you. The first ordinance is ordinance number 3296-2018. It's to rezone 4970 Sunbury Road, being 2.1 acres located on the east side of Sunbury Road, 1,000 feet north of Morris Road from LR Limited Rural District and LC3 and LC4 Limited Commercial Districts to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Key Hotel and Property Management LLC, care of Attorney Sean Mental. Proposed use is a hotel. The city department's recommendation is approval. The Northland Community Council's recommendation was disapproval, 016 to 2. The Northland Community Council voted to approve this project 1602 with four conditions. So they were four, if it had four conditions. The applicant fully complied with three out of the four. The fourth condition asks that no egress be allowed directly onto Sunbury Road. The applicant has agreed to only allow right-turn egress. And we now, we have Dave Paul, who is here representing President of the Northland Community Council. We have reached out to him. He is in council chambers this evening, and he felt as though this would be an adequate compromise. And so the recommendation will remain still a disapproval because that's how, because they didn't meet all four of them. They wanted no turning, but there are no, but there's really no other opposition that's here at council. And since there has been a compromise, we would want to continue to move forward. Mr. Paul. Correct. And so, that being the case, I would first, so I would move for passage. Let's hear some questions from my council colleagues.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 3297-2018 to grant a variance from the provisions of sections 33, 32.037, R2F Residential District, 33, 12.29 Parking Space, 33, 12.49 Minimum Numbers of Parking Spaces Required, 33, 21.01 Dumpster Area, and 33, 32.26 Minimum Side Yard Permitted of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 326 St. Clair Avenue, and to permit a six-unit building with reduced development standards in the R2F Residential District. The applicant is 328 St. Clair LLC, care of Mr. Dave Perry, and the proposed use is a six-unit apartment building. The city department's recommendation is approval, and the Near East Area Commission's recommendation is approval, 12 to 12 to 0. And Ms. Kathleen Bailey is here representing the North, President of the North, Near East Area Commission, and I think she wants to give a few, say a few words on this legislation. Good evening, Ms. Bailey.
Good evening, and I will be very brief. These are pretty straightforward variances, you know, where do you put a dumpster? That's really nothing to talk about. I just wanted to take the opportunity to put this in a a bigger picture, because we have fought so long. It's been a long struggle for some of us. I don't know if anybody's been here long enough to remember our struggle. I don't think you were born. But we've worked hard to start getting quality development. We have, it's a struggle for us because there's a lot of things we have to consider historic. We have to consider the needs of 2018, and we have to consider the needs of the new type of the millennials, of people starting to move into the city. This project represents all of that. Mr. Kelly has done a great job. He is addressing the needs of the community, but what I wanted to point out was, he's also the one who did the St. Clair Hotel, and which he was very adamant, and I met with him, he was very adamant about maintaining the history. The, as you know, it was very famous for housing African-American musicians at a time when segregation did not allow them to to take up, to take temporary residence downtown. So I wanted to let you know, this is more to us than where the dumpster is being placed and the minimum side yard, et cetera, but it's a representative of not only redeveloping that area, but also we're starting to attract developers who have recognized the the historic value of the community as well as me the 2018 needs. And also, I wanted to add too, he has addressed... community, as well as me, the 2018 needs. And also, I wanted to add too, he is addressing moderate-income individuals. So he's actually done three things. He's looking at the history, he's looking at some of the things that are needed for 2018, and he's looking at a mixed income. So this does a lot more than just move where we're going to put a dumpster. So I just want to make sure that everybody knew that, and we consider this a very great, I don't know, milestone for what we've been fighting for, for so many years. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. And certainly it is, certainly there's been a lot of investment right there on, from, on St. Clair and Mount Vernon going down that street. So thank you. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 3297-2018 to rezone 2337 Fuji Drive, being 1.19 acres located on the south side of Fuji Drive, 170 feet east of Spring Run Drive, from P1 Parking District and LC4 Limited Commercial District to CPD Commercial Plan District Development. The applicant is Mendoza Company, Inc., care of Dave Perry. The proposed use is commercial use. The City Department's recommendation is approval. The Northland Community Council's recommendation is approval, 16 to 0. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, first I amend, as amended to the clerk.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Amended.
Thank you. And now move for passage as amended.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 3302-2018 to rezone 1030 Allen Creek Drive, being 3.47 acres located on the east side of Allen Creek Drive, 350 feet south of East Livingston Avenue, from LM Limited Manufacturing District to LM Limited Manufacturing District. The applicant is WCOL LLC, care of Dave Perry. Proposed use is a self-storage facility with accessory truck rental. The City Department's recommendation is approval. The Livingston Avenue Area Commission's recommendation is approval, 6 to 1. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 3312.2018 to grant a variance from the provisions of sections 3332.035, R3 Residential District of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 249 and 251 Taylor Avenue, to permit a two-unit dwelling in the R3 Residential District. The applicant is Brenda S. Parker. Proposed use is a two-unit dwelling. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Near East Area Commission's recommendation is approval. And again, we have a speaker, Ms. Kathleen Bailey.
Thank you very much, members of council. Again, I won't, it's pretty straightforward what's here for the variance. What I just wanted to take another opportunity to put this in a bigger picture. Taylor Avenue has been a long neglected street, so we're happy with all the development that's coming, but it's one of our gateways. And I want to make sure everybody understands that. So when we're talking about, so you see anything coming on Taylor Avenue, it's extremely important. We're going to look for more infrastructure changes. We're going to look for more signage. We're going to look for more landscaping, because this is one of the streets that everybody knows when they come to, we've got so many people coming off of I-670 Leonard Avenue. They need to understand that they're coming to a really nice neighborhood. So I just want you to keep that in mind. You see Taylor Avenue, it's very important to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Bailey. And that is where we have the OSU Hospital is located on Taylor Avenue. We have our new library on Taylor Avenue. And so thank you for your ongoing leadership. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 3330-2018 to rezone 5721 Cherry Bottom Road, being 13.3 acres located on the west side of Cherry Bottom Road, 25 feet south of Clancy Court, from R Rural District to AR1 Apartment Residential District. The applicant is Oxford Circle LLC, care of Attorney David Hodge. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Northland Community Council's recommendation is approval. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. And there is a variance for the same address, and it is, so ordinance number 3331-2018 to grant a variance from the provisions of sections 3333.18. Building lines of the Columbus City Codes for property located at 5721 Cherry Bottom Road to permit the development in apartment complex with reduced building lines in the AR1 Apartment Residential District. The applicant again is Oxford Circle LLC and care of Attorney David Hodge. Proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Northland Community Council's recommendation is 016 to 2. And for that legislation, I don't know, Dave, do you want to speak, do you want to speak on it? Okay. So let me just do this first. Let me, I know we weren't, let me have a staff, I'm going to talk, staff presentation first, and then I'll bring up, and then I think David Hodge is, there's David. Okay. All right. Let the staff make a presentation on this one.
Council President Harden, members of council. The applicant has received recommendation of approval from staff and the Development Commission for a concurrent rezoning to the AR1 Apartment Residential District to allow the development of an apartment complex. The requested variance will reduce the building setback from 50 feet to 17 feet along Cherry Bottom Road. Staff supports the variance, preferring buildings along Cherry Bottom frontage rather than parking. A site plan will also be committed to that incorporates protections of natural areas and internal trail network, and links the Big Walnut Creek Gateway and Blenden Woods Metro Park, and additional landscaping and screening on the site. For these reasons, staff recommends approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions to the staff? No. David, Attorney Hodge?
Good evening, President Harden, Chair Tyson, members of council, David Hodge, with the law firm Underhill &amp; Hodge at 8,000 Walton Parkway, Suite 260, New Albany, 43054. Here this evening on behalf of the applicant, Oxford Circle LLC, with this council variance request. Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight, and I'm going to take just a couple steps back, and I'll be very brief. This site plan shows the property to be developed, and this is the development piece of the property. It's a little unfortunate that it doesn't show the remainder of what's going on, but I think it's critically important for the council to understand that. Over to the east is Blenden Woods. All of this property along the northern side is going to be donated to the city's Recreation and Parks Division, as is all of this property all along the west that goes clear up to the north. We are going to install an eight-foot pedestrian trail along the Cherry Bottom Road frontage. We're going to install a 10-foot trail on this, what will become eventually the city's property along the north. It ties in over here to the west and extends over there. This is a missing tooth in Recreation and Parks trail system, and so they were thrilled to see this project come forward and through the process. And this is all a donation by my client, the developer, and we are also going to be installing all of these trails. In addition to that, to, there will be a crossing installed here on Cherry Bottom to get folks off of this trail system back here at the creek, to cross Cherry Bottom to get into Blenden Woods. And Metro Parks is working with us on exactly where that placement is going to be, and then we'll extend a trail to get folks up into Blenden Woods. So it's a great, it's a great project from a Recreation and Parks perspective. The variance is to the setback. And it's a little bit unfortunate that, you know, each area commission, as the council knows, has its own processes. And in this case, there was, I believe, some discussion about this variance request that we weren't able to necessarily participate in. So I think it led to some confusion possibly among the Northland members. The setback variance request is to reduce the setback to 17 feet from the requirement. I believe that Northland was concerned that that would preclude the ability long-term to improve Cherry Bottom Road. However, we are dedicating the necessary amount of frontage along the front of this property, so there's a donation of our frontage to allow that long-term widening of Cherry Bottom Road. So we are not going to in any way, shape, or form prevent the ability long-term for Cherry Bottom to be improved. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Attorney Hodge. I don't have any questions I want to ask. And I would just say that we, my staff and I have spoken with Attorney Hodge about this issue. We also spoke with Dave Paul. We could just, you know, I could just read the comments that we had, from, we should talk to Commissioner Paul. But I'll let him come up and share his response to this, and then try to move the legislation forward. So, David. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Chair Tyson, members of council, and staff. I can validate what Attorney Hodge has said. I do think, although the committee has not met, our Development Committee has not met again since the night we met with him back in August, I believe that they were under the impression that this was going to present a problem in terms of the expansion of Cherry Bottom Road in the future, and did not completely understand that 100-foot dedication of right-of-way. And so I think that our committee, if they did understand that today, would recommend approval. As you noted, they did support the application for rezoning. They liked the project. They're very appreciative of the donation of land to Recreation and Parks. So overall, we like the project. I think folks were mainly concerned about having Cherry Bottom Road going right outside someone's bedroom window or kitchen window, and that's obviously not going to be the case with the project that's been proposed. So again, I can't modify our committee's recommendation, but I can tell you, I don't think anyone from our committee is going to be knocking on your door to complain if you approve this legislation.
And thank you, Commissioner Paul. And again, it always is a pleasure that when we see something, when we look at the recommendations from the Northland Community Council, I do appreciate always being able to contact you, you being very receptive, and us kind of talking through what's the situation and trying to work it out. So I appreciate you being here, and I think it is just, again, by his presence, being in the room, and there is no other opposition from the Northland Community Council, that we, I think, have gotten this all worked out, and the road, there is enough space for the widening of the road.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you so much for your leadership. So if there are no questions or comments from my colleagues on this, I would move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. And that concludes zoning this evening.
Thank you, Chair Tyson. Can I get a motion to adjourn meeting 64?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Zoning meeting is adjourned. We will reconvene meeting number 63 momentarily. May I get a motion to reconvene special meeting number 63?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Meeting is reconvened. I'm going to go back to Chair Brown.
Thank you, Council President Harden. I have two ordinances left in finance. They are in first reading, so you can go back to page four. Ordinance 3307-2018 to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into a universal term contract for the option to purchase HVAC parts and filters with Allied Supply Company Incorporated to authorize the expenditure of $1 from the general budget reservation BRPO 000978. The term of the proposed option contract is two years, with the option to renew for one additional year. These HVAC parts are primarily used by the Facilities Management Division, but other departments use them as well. Two bids were received for this contract through the competitive bidding process. Allied was selected as the lower responsive bidder. Questions from colleagues? Seeing none, I request a wave second reading.
Second.
No need to read.
No need to? All righty. I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, we have ordinance 3317-2018 to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into a universal term contract for the option to purchase overhead door parts with Kelly and Askew Incorporated to authorize the expenditure of $1 from general budget reservation BRPO 000978. The term of the proposed option contract is for two years, with the option to renew for one additional year. The Facilities Management Division is the primary user of these parts. Only one bid was received through the competitive bidding process for this contract. Questions? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
I have one ordinance in rules and reference.
Please.
May I do that? I have ordinance 3381-2018 to enact new section 4565 dot 11 of the Columbus City Codes in order to provide for a job creation incentive program employer minimum wage. This ordinance establishes a minimum wage at which the city of Columbus can offer a job incentive. It also compels council to consider this wage floor every three years. When a job doesn't pay a living wage, employees struggle to support their families, the opportunity gap widens, and often those same families need to seek public assistance in order to bridge that gap. Bottom line, not all jobs are created equal. And that's why I'm proud to introduce this code revision, to create the new $15-an-hour minimum hourly wage for any job receiving an incentive through our city of Columbus. This change will ensure that our dollars go towards family-supporting jobs when we incentivize job creation in our city. I've spoken a lot with Auditor Kilgore about the city's finances, and one of the things that she highlights is her concern about wage stagnation. It's something that we need to keep our eye on. And so I want to highlight that an additional, I hope, outcome of this ordinance is that we are able to work with companies to get them to increase what they're paying, their base pay, by working with us on incentives to understand that the city of Columbus prioritizes good benefits, but also good pay. I want to thank the Department of Development for working with us on this code change, and for really working this into their policies over the last year. So this is not something that's suddenly dropped on the department or dropped on businesses. It's a reflection of the relationship the department has with businesses already. And I want to thank the hard work that your department did back last year, when we took the recommendations from our incentive and abatement study on the road. Director Shoney gave four presentations in four different neighborhoods across our city to try to give access. Close to 200 people showed up at these, and heard from the director about not just our residential abatement restructuring, but also these possibilities for sort of increasing the bar for our wage incentives. What we learned from other cities is that you incentivize the outcome that you want, and some cities, that meant that they incentivized towards a certain industry sector. But we started with wages, because we want to see wages lifted in our city. We don't have an unemployment problem. We have an underemployment problem when not enough families are able to share in the prosperity that is Columbus. With that, Director, if you want to add anything, the microphone's yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, first of all, thank you to you, and I also want to call Andrew Dyer with LRO. Andrew put in a lot of work. You can never have a piece of legislation that is simple that didn't have a lot of work behind it, and this looks like a fairly simple piece of legislation. But Andrew did a lot of work behind the scenes to make sure that it was clean, effective legislation. This is, this is not a silver bullet, but it is something that moves us down the path. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Director. And before I move for passage, I also want to, want to say that for businesses looking to attract and retain talent, paying good wages is a part of that. And we held our announcement of this at All People's Fresh Market last week, and heard from Community Development for All People as an employer, and then sort of why this makes sense for their business model, and also heard from an employee who had felt the difference in her family by having a raise. Any comments? Councilmember Tyson?
Yes. Chair Brown, I just want to commend you for your work, and I know this has been over a year in the making. And I appreciate that as the Chair of Health and Human Services and the Chair of Workforce Development, I absolutely understand the importance of making $15 an hour or more. One of the reasons why people are in poverty is because they just don't make enough money. And so when you think about the average family in the shelters making $8.40 an hour, you you can understand why they're in the shelter. So, if we're going to be given these incentives, it is clearly important for individuals that we are incentivizing to be able to pay some more of a livable wage. It gets, it starts them at the point where that they can then make more money because they're not starting at $8, they're starting at $15 an hour. This is important legislation for our community, and I have to applaud you and the Director and Andrew and everyone that's worked on this legislation because it will impact and change people's lives. Thank you.
Thank you Councilmember. Council President?
I would like to join Councilmember Tyson in committing your leadership on this. I don't know if you said it again tonight, but the other night you said that in working with the consultants who put together the plan, when they talked about our incentives, their advice was you incentivize your values to get where you want to get to, and knowing that even though we have an unemployment rate of below 4%, a third of us are still living in poverty, means that we have to show our values through our incentive policy and help correct a structural imbalance in our wage force right now. And so, your whole staffs and teams diligent work and the council's support is something I'm just very grateful for and look forward to passage.
Thank you Council President. Okay, seeing no further comment, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
That's all I have. Council President, thanks.
Thank you Chair Brown. Next committee to come before council is the Public Safety Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Mitch Brown. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you President Harden. First, I'd like to remind everyone that we will have a public hearing on public safety budget on December 19th at 5:00 PM in these chambers. This evening, we have one ordinance 3375-2018, to authorize the Director/Mayor of the City of Columbus to accept a fiscal year 2018 forensic DNA laboratory efficiency improvement and capacity enhancement program grant award from the National Institute of Justice, to authorize a crime lab forensic scientist, III, as the official city representative, to act in connection with this grant, to authorize an appropriation of $430,000 from the unappropriated balance of the general government grant fund to the Division of Police to cover the cost of the fiscal year 2018 forensic DNA laboratory efficiency improvement and capacity enhancement program grant activities and expenditures, and to declare emergency. I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
That's all we have in public safety, sir.
That's how you do it. Next committee to come before, thank you Chair Brown, the next committee to come before council is the Public Service and Transportation Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Remy. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much President Harden. I'd also like to remind the public that we have the public hearing on the budget for administration, civil service, and public transportation, and public service and transportation on the 13th of December from 5:00 to 6:30. Tonight, I have ordinance number 3198-2018, to amend the 2018 capital improvement budget to authorize the city auditor to transfer cash and appropriation between projects within the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to establish purchase orders and contracts with multiple vendors for the purchase of commodities, supplies, and materials for pavement marking, for pavement marking materials, signed manufacturing materials, school flashers, and various traffic signal commodities for the Department of Public Service, Division of Traffic Management, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to associate all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the appropriate universal term contract purchase agreements for traffic management and control for the Division of Traffic Management, to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,875,000 from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund for this purpose and to declare an emergency. The Department of Public Service, Division of Traffic Management utilizes pavement marking materials, signed manufacturing materials, school flashers, traffic signal commodities, and a variety of traffic management and control commodities throughout the city. The Division can capitalize these expenses. These supplies and materials are necessary to ensure traffic safety throughout the city of Columbus. Universal term contracts have been completed for these commodities. This ordinance will also allow funding to be used to award one-time bids for capital traffic commodities as necessary. It has also been determined it is in the best interest of the city to purchase school flashers through the ODOT contract 063. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, I have ordinance number 3230-2018, to amend the 2018 capital improvement budget to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a contract modification with AECOM Technical Services in connection with the Celebrate One Sidewalk Hilltop Project, to authorize the expenditure of up to $106,810 from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund for the project and to declare an emergency. This legislation authorizes the Director of Public Service to modify a professional services contract with AECOM Technical Services, Inc., to add additional funds for design of the Celebrate One Sidewalk Hilltop Contract. Ordinance 2920-2017, authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a professional services contract with AECOM Technical Services, Inc., for Celebrate One Sidewalk Hilltop Project. This project consists of the installation of approximately 2,200 feet of sidewalk along Beveldere Avenue between Mound Street and Sullivan Avenue, and approximately 5,400 feet of sidewalk along Springmont Avenue, Walsh Avenue, between Highland Avenue and Ryan Avenue. Sidewalk will be installed along one side of both streets. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, I have ordinance 3236-2018, to amend the 2018 capital improvement budget to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a contract modification with DLZ Ohio, Inc., in connection with the Celebrate One Sidewalk Near South Project, to authorize the expenditure of up to $275,000 from the Streets and Highway Bond Fund for the project and to declare an emergency. This legislation authorizes the Director of Public Service to modify a professional services contract with DLZ Ohio, Inc., to add additional funds for design of the Celebrate One Sidewalk Near South Project. Ordinance 2919-2017, authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a professional services contract with DLZ Ohio, Inc., for the Celebrate One Sidewalk Near South Project. This project consists of the installation of approximately 3,900 feet of sidewalk along Deschler Avenue between 18th and Lockborn Road, and approximately 1,600 feet of sidewalk along Coseth between Carpenter and Linwood Avenue. Sidewalk will be installed along one side of both streets. Seeing no additional questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, I have ordinance 3238-2018, to amend the 2018 capital improvements budget to authorize the Director of Public Service to execute a contract modification with the Danbert Relative to the UIRF Northeast Don Light Curbs and Sidewalks Project, to authorize the expenditure of up to, of $323,201.10 from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund to pay for the contract modification and to declare an emergency. This legislation authorizes the Director of Public Service to modify an existing construction contract with Danbert, Inc., relative to the UIRF Northeast Don Light Curbs and Sidewalks Project, and to provide payment for additional construction, construction administration, and inspection services necessary for completion of that project. Ordinance 1224-2018, authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with Danbert for the construction of various improvements to Don Light Avenue and adjacent streets. This project includes replacement of existing pavement on Don Light Avenue using chemical stabilization of the subbase and new flexible pavement. Installation of new curb, curb ramps, sidewalk, and storm sewer within the existing right-of-way, replacement of an existing eight-inch water main on Don Light Avenue, and an installation of sidewalk connecting the two termini at the intersections of Woodland Avenue at Minnesota Avenue and Woodland Avenue at Myrtle Avenue. The work performed to date includes replacing the existing pavement on Don Light Avenue, installing new curbs, curb ramps, sidewalks, and storm sewer within the existing right-of-way, and replacing an eight-inch water main on Don Light Avenue. Seeing no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, I have ordinance number 3272-2018, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a professional services contract with the Resource International, Inc., for the pedestrian safety improvements Maple Canyon Avenue Sidewalk Project, to authorize the expenditure of up to $250,000 from the Streets and Highway Spot Fund to pay for this contract and to declare an emergency. This legislation authorizes the Director of Public Service to enter into professional services contracts with Resource International, Inc., in the amount of up to $250,000 for the pedestrian safety improvements Maple Canyon Sidewalk, Avenue Sidewalks Project. The intent of this project is to provide the city of Columbus Department of Public Service additional resources to perform various professional engineering and surveying tasks and provide technical expertise for the department to implement the safety pedestrian, safety improvements Maple Canyon Avenue Sidewalks Projects, which consists of installing sidewalk along the east side of Maple Canyon Avenue from the existing sidewalk installed at the fire station approximately 500 feet north of State Route 161 to Jewett Drive. Seeing no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, I have ordinance number 3283-2018, to authorize the city attorney to file complaints in order to immediately appropriate and accept the remaining fee simple and lesser real estate necessary to timely complete the arterial street rehabilitation Hamilton Road I-70 to Refugee Public Improvement Project and to declare an emergency. The city's Department of Public Service is performing arterial street rehabilitation Hamilton Road I-70 to Refugee Public Improvement Project. The city must acquire certain fee simple title and lesser real estate located in the vicinity of Hamilton Road between Refugee and I-70. In order for DPS to completely, in order for DPS to timely complete the project, the city passed ordinance 0229-2017, authorizing the city attorney to acquire the real estate. Furthermore, the city also adopted resolutions 0003X-2018 and 0297X, establishing the city's intent to appropriate the real estate. The city's acquisition of the real estate will help make, improve, or repair certain portions of the public right-of-way of Hamilton Road between Refugee Road and I-70, which will be open to the public without charge. The city attorney pursuant to Columbus City Codes, Section 909.03, served notice to all the owners of the real estate of the public's, public projects, public purpose and necessity in adoption of resolutions. However, the city attorney was unable to either locate some of the real estate owners or agree with some of the real estate owners in good faith regarding the amount of just compensation. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, I have ordinance number 3295-2018, to amend the 2018 capital improvement budget to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a professional services contract with American Structure Point for the arterial street rehabilitation Hudson Street I-71 to Cleveland Avenue Project, to authorize the expenditure of up to $650,000 from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund to pay for this contract and to declare an emergency. This legislation authorizes the Director of Public Service to enter into professional services contracts with the, with American Structure Point in the amount of up to $650,000 for the arterial street rehabilitation Hudson Street I-71 to Cleveland Avenue Project. A modification is planned to fund future tasks within the project to complete design. The intent of this project is to provide the city of Columbus Department of Public Service additional resources to design a project along Hudson Street from I-71 to Cleveland Avenue to provide an east-west connection in the central Ohio greenways network. The project consists of detailed design for the reconstruction of Hudson Street. The reconstructed section will include replacement of the pavement and the creation of an urban greenway. The existing 16-inch, 20-inch, and 2-inch water lines will be replaced with a new system. Relocation of private utilities along the Division of Power Electric Distributing System are a possibility and will be accounted for in the design. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, I have ordinance 3373-2018, to authorize the Director of Finance and Management, on behalf of Department of Public Service, to establish contracts and purchase orders with General Supply and Services, Inc., DBA JECSPRO, for decorative traffic poles and related accessories to the downtown streetscape Short North CID, High Street Improvements Phase III Project, the NCR Weinland Park Seventh to Ninth Project, and the Miscellaneous Economic Development Creative Campus Phase II Project, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the city code, to authorize the expenditure of up to $418,625 from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund for this purchase and to declare an emergency. This legislation authorizes a bidding waiver to purchase decorative traffic poles and related accessories for the following projects: Downtown Streetscape Short North CID, High Street Improvements Phase III, NCR Weinland Seventh to Ninth, and Miscellaneous Economic Development Creative Campus Phase II. The Department of Public Service is in the process of bidding the construction portion of the downtown, these named projects, and is preparing to bid construction for the Miscellaneous Economic Development Creative Campus Phase II Project. These projects will be used using decorative traffic poles and associated items that have a lead time of up to six months from the date of order. In an effort to ensure these projects are completed on time, Public Service will need to purchase these items ahead of contracting with the awarded construction contractor, which will allow delivery of the needed items to occur at least two months before the contractor could receive them. Informal quotes were received from two companies on the needed material. The legislation is requesting a waive of bidding provisions according to city code Chapter 329, to enter into contract and establish purchase orders with General Supply and Services, Inc. Director Gallagher, could you speak a little bit to this ordinance, please?
Yes. President Harden, Chair Remy, other members of council, bear with me with my throat, I apologize. For these three projects, all three of these are on a very tight timeframe to get the projects done, and we are noticing with our traffic signal polls that we are up to 40 weeks lead time to get the polls. Therefore, we're doing something new with these, and rather than making the projects take a long time to complete, we want to get the polls ahead of time. And so, we got informal quotes from two companies. We are going with the lowest quote, but to keep us on track with those projects, we're asking to waive bids so we can get that order placed. Thank you.
Thank you very much Director Gallagher. If, are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you very much. Next, I have the ordinance 3390-2018, to authorize the city's Chief Innovation Officer to enter into contract with various MCOs to make available vendors for the prenatal TRIP Assistance Program to provide transportation services to pregnant women, to authorize the expenditure of $1 million from the Smart City USDOT Grant Fund to pay the costs thereof and to declare an emergency. In June 2016, the city of Columbus, Ohio, won the United States Department of Transportation Smart City Challenge. With a portion of this funding, Columbus intends to address the most pressing community-centric transportation problems by integrating an ecosystem of advanced and innovative technologies, applications, and services to bridge the socio-technical gap and meet the needs of residents of all ages and abilities. The prenatal TRIP Assistance Project recognizes transportation as a need in today's society to ensure a healthy population, especially when it comes to more vulnerable populations. Transportation is a piece of the complete puzzle that can influence the rates of infant mortality, a recognized problem prevalent in the Franklin County region. From October 1st, 2016, to September 30, 2017, the infant mortality rate in Franklin County was 8.6 deaths per 1,000 live births. This project seeks to partner with Medicaid managed care organizations to engage a vendor to take the existing mainly call center-based non-medical medical transport, excuse me, non-emergency medical transportation services delivered by MCOs today, and update the process and delivery to be more accessible and easy to use through web and smartphone applications as well as a call center. This ordinance is needed to authorize the city's Chief Innovation Officer to contract with CareSource and Molina to require said MCOs to contract with a vendor to develop a technologically enhanced NEMT service. These NEMT service enhancements will be more accessible and easier to use through the newly provided NEMT TRIP requests portals offered via web and smartphone applications as well as a call center. The term of each contract is from date of execution through May 31st, 2021. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Now, I have one item that was on first reading I'd like to move back to, return to page four. Next, I have ordinance 3094-2018, to authorize the appropriation of funds in the Smart City Grant Fund within the Department of Public Service contingent upon the execution of the revised amendment obligated by Paul G. Allen Philanthropies for various expenses related to the implementation of the Smart Columbus Electrification Plan. This legislation authorizes the Department of Public Service to appropriate the fourth installment of the Vulcan Grant Funding contingent upon the execution of the revised amendment obligated by Paul G. Allen Philanthropies, which will support the implementation of the Smart Columbus Electrification Plan. Separate legislation will be submitted for council's approval to expend the appropriated funds. Seeing no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you very much. That's all I have in Public Service and Transportation.
Thank you sir. The next committee to come before council is the Environment Committee.
One other piece I forgot about. In the Environment Committee, I have ordinance number 3136-2018, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to modify and extend an agreement on behalf of the city of Columb... of Public Utilities to modify and extend an agreement on behalf of the City of Columbus between Kurtz Brothers Central Ohio LLC and the Solid Waste Authority of Central Ohio for the design, construction, and operation of the Organic Waste Recovery and Reuse System Project, and to authorize the expenditure of $1,200,000 from the Sewage System Operating Fund. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
By voice.
Oh, by voice, apologize.
Please call the roll. By voice, please.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Remy?
Yes.
Stenziano?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes, ordinance pass.
Now, I'm complete. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Remy. The next committee to come before council is the Economic Development and Small Business Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Page. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. This evening in Economic Development, Small Business, we have 3269, 2018, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a downtown office incentive agreement with BBI Logistics LLC. BBI Logistics is a freight brokerage firm founded in 2017. They specialize in handling full truckload shipments across the United States and Canada, and their goal is to help customers find the most cost-effective and reliable carrier while also maximizing low potential for their carriers. There are no additional questions or comments. I move for passage.
Second. Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
3270, 2018, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a downtown office incentive agreement with Rise Brands Incorporated. Headquartered in Columbus, Rise Brand manages and operates two unique retail concepts, pens, which offers duck pen bowling, and 16-bit arcade-style bar. In calendar year 2019, the company has plans to open six more locations, and the company's goal is to grow 20 to 20 establishments by 2020 and is currently scouting new locations. There are no further questions or comments. I would like to ask Director Shoney to share additional comments.
Just one quick clarification for the members of council. Thank you, Chair Page. This is just simply on their corporate office. This is not on any of the entertainment venues, so just wanted to make that one clarification.
Thank you, Director. There are no questions or comments. I move for passage.
Second. Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
3313, 2018, to establish the Polaris Theory Tax Increment Financing Area by removing certain parcels from the existing Polaris II Tax Increment Financing Area by amending ordinance 1847-2015 and adding additional parcels that were not part of an existing tax increment financing area and to declare an emergency. This TIF area will include parcels that, as of January 1st of 2018, were either undeveloped, planned for redevelopment, or for which development is not yet complete, in the Polaris Gemini Place in the Lyra Drive area. This ordinance provides for 100% exemption from real property taxation on the increase in assessed value of all non-residential development for a period of no more than 30 years. The Olin-Tangji Local School District and the Delaware County Joint Vocational School District will receive in years 1 through 20, 50% of the real property tax revenues on the improvement they would have received had the improvement not been subject to the TIF, and in years 21 through 30, 100% of the real property tax revenues on the improvement they would have received had the improvement not been subject to the TIF. Director, do you have any additional comments?
Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
President Harden, if I may move to the Housing Committee?
Please.
3410-2018, to amend the 2018 capital improvement budget to authorize the city auditor to transfer funds between projects within the Development Taxable Bonds Fund, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into agreements with Driven Foundation, Franklinton Rising, Impact Community Action, Refuge Incorporated, and Youth Bill Columbus Community School in order to promote workforce development in the construction trades for youth or restored citizens and transform vacant and blighted structures or lots into productive parcels under the Learning Skills to Lift Neighborhoods Grant Program, and to authorize the expenditure of $120,000 from Development Taxable Bonds Fund and to declare an emergency. This is a piece of legislation I am very happy to introduce this evening, and again, this is our second year of doing the Learning Skills to Lift Neighborhoods Grant Program and awarding five organizations that will do great work in the community and also employ either youth or restored citizens and give them the skills that they need to lead productive lives. I would like to thank the Department of Development, Director Shoney, for your continued work in this, as well as Andrew Dyer and Rolanda Hampton for really working with us to make sure that this was a successful grant program. There are no further questions or comments. I move for passage.
Second. Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
If I may move to Judiciary and Court Administration?
Please.
3174-2018, to authorize the City Attorney's Office to enter into three service contracts with Mighty Crow Incorporated to conduct a comprehensive evaluation of three U.S. Department of Justice's Office of Justice Programs, Bureau of Justice Assistance Comprehensive Opioid Abuse Site-Based Program Grant-Funded Interventions, to waive competitive bidding provisions of Chapter 329 of Columbus City Codes, to authorize the expenditure of $186,000 from the grant project funds and to declare an emergency. Are there any questions or comments, any comments from the city attorney? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second. Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
And President Harden, if I may move to rules and reference?
Please.
And this will be my last piece to read as a council member. 3316-2018, to amend Section 4509.07 of the Columbus City Codes in order to address retaliatory eviction language. As we have all heard over the past few years, 19,000 evictions are filed each year here in Franklin County. For the past two years, I've worked with community partners in this council to dissect some of the underlying causes of the high eviction rate in Franklin County. We joined forces with Franklin County Commissioner Marilyn Brown and the Ohio State University's John Glenn College of Public Affairs to announce the commission of an eviction study to, again, understand more about what's going on here in our city. We learned that there were individuals and families who were unfortunately being evicted or under threat of eviction due to making complaints to code enforcement about the conditions of their property. And one woman who came to council and shared her story with us very courageously was Shante Flowers, who she and her family were under threat of eviction due, again, to making a complaint about the conditions of their structure. And myself and my colleagues, we came together and looked at the retaliatory eviction language as long, as well as with the City Attorney's Office, and decided that we need to strengthen it and really put some teeth in our code. So, that is the changes I am proposing this evening. We had a hearing last Thursday in which we had, again, testimony from the City Attorney's Office, as well as the Legal Aid Society of Columbus, code enforcement, and the Apartment Association in support of this ordinance. And if there are no additional questions, President Harden?
Councilmember Page, Chair Page, just want to say thank you for, for your work in this space. It's very fitting that you're, fitting that your last piece of legislation as a council member is one dealing with one of the most important issues of our community, affordable housing. The work that you did with Ms. Flowers, who came and told her story at city council and for a lot of us made personal the things that we hear every day about the plight of folks in our community should be, should be commended. The work that your staff did over, over the last year. This ordinance is, is a first step. I know that you have, you have left some work for us to do. You have done a lot of work and, and put some things in neat bows for us to take across the finish line, and we appreciate your work on that, so thank you.
Thank you, President Harden. And again, echoing just the work from the team, Andrew Dyer, Rolanda Hampton, and Charles Newman putting a lot of work into putting this all together. And again, the City Attorney's Office, Katerina Carrick and Isaac Rinsky, who worked to draft this legislation as well. So, if there are no further questions or comments, I first move to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Second. Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Amended.
I now move for passage as amended.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
And that is all I have, President Harden.
Thank you, Chair Page. The next committee to come before council is the Public Utilities Committee. That committee is chaired by President Protem Stenziano. President Protem, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Tonight in Public Utilities, bring forward ordinance 3058-2018 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to renew an existing engineering contract, agreement with Black and Beach Corporation for the Wastewater Treatment Facilities Upgrade General Program Number Four, overall engineering consultant services, and to expend up to $1 million from the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Bond Fund. The project's scope includes basic services provided under this agreement and the professional engineering services necessary for the wastewater treatment facilities upgrade. The agreement is necessary to provide technical and engineering assistance to the city and its design professionals in planning and coordination of the work. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, bring ordinance 3401-2018, to authorize the city auditor to transfer $1,547,301.98 between object classes within the Storm Sewer Operating Fund budget to pay internal bills for street cleaning and snow removal services to the Department of Public Service and to declare an emergency. The division's internal bills are trending higher than it has paid at the time of the 2018 budget submission, and particularly, the quarterly bill from the Department of Public Service for street cleaning and snow removal services has increased above budget estimates. There is sufficient budget authority available in the 2018 Storm Sewer Operating Funds budget to transfer these funds. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second. Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
And then, President Harden, if we could go back to first readings on page five? First ordinance 0364X-2018, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities on behalf of the Division of Power to cause plans and specifications to be prepared for installing an LED decorative street lighting system with underground wiring in the Morning Star North 40 project area under the assessment procedure. Property owners have submitted petitions for an LED street lighting system with decorative poles and underground wiring in this neighborhood. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second. Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
0378X-2018, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities on behalf of the Division of Power to cause plans and specifications to be prepared for installing an LED decorative street lighting system with ornamental poles and underground wiring for the Kings Hill Drive area under the assessment procedure. Submitted a last resolution, property owners have submitted petitions for the LED lighting underground wiring. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Ordinance 2976-2018, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to modify an existing construction agreement and construction inspection services agreement with Stan Tech Consulting Services Incorporated for the blueprint Clintonville 1 Overbrook-Chatham Downsput Redirection and Lateral Lining Project, to authorize the expenditure of up to $687,041.57 from the Sanitary Sewer Go Bond Fund. This services for this contract include oversight of the project during construction to ensure that work performed by the construction contractor conforms to the project plans and specifications. The majority of the projects will reduce inflow and infiltration into the city's sanitary sewer system. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Ordinance 3024-2018, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to modify an existing construction administration and construction inspection services agreement with DLZ of Ohio for the Downsput Redirection Clintonville 1 Cook-Glynn-Mott Project and the lateral lining Clintonville 1 Cook-Glynn-Mott Project, to authorize transfer within $35,821.06 and the expenditure of up to $599,680.46 from the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Bond Fund and an amendment to the 2018 capital improvements budget. The contract will be modified as needed throughout the three-year period to include projects as they go to construction. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Ordinance 3168-2018, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to apply for, and should it be awarded, accept appropriate and enter into a 3D elevation program grant agreement with the United States Geological Survey through the USGS Office of Acquisition and Grants in the amount of $247,758, to authorize transfer and appropriation of $11,545.96 from the Electrical Operating Fund, $73,439.86, from the Water Operating Fund, $82,335.93, from the Sewage System Operating Fund, and $21,956.25 from the Stormwater Operating Fund to the General Government Grant Fund, and authorize expenditure of $189,278 from the General Government Grant Fund. The purpose of the 3D elevation program is to gather information and respond to the need for high-quality topographic data to complete a national collection of 3D elevation data. Accurate elevation data for the Department of Public Utilities will assist in assessing the inspect, impact, and mitigation of runoff issues, including non-point source pollution of lakes, rivers, and wetlands. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Ordinance 3200-2018, to authorize the appropriation, expenditure of $50,000 from the Collection Fees Fund to establish a purchase order with Appelus LLC for collection services for the Department of Public Utilities. The Department of Public Utilities utilizes this contract for the collection of delinquent and small donor amount accounts receivable, other debts, and judgment. This contract is self-funding. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Ordinance 3240-2018, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into agreements with Patrick Engineering Incorporated for professional engineering services for the Westerville and Smokey Row Roads, street lighting improvement projects for the Division of Power, to authorize the transfer and expenditure of up to $208,847.78 within the Electricity General Obligation Bonds Fund and to authorize an amendment to the 2018 capital improvement budget. The projects will replace outdated street lighting, which will result in an energy consumption saving for the city of Columbus. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second. Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Ordinance 3243-2018, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a contract with GEA Mechanical Equipment, U.S. Incorporated, to provide for the parts, maintenance, and services of Westfalla separator centrifuges and the subcomponents for the Division of Sewerage and Drainage in accordance with the relevant provisions of sole source procurement of the city code, and to authorize the expenditure of $300,000 from the Sanitary Sewer Operating Fund. There is a need to enter into a parts, maintenance, and service contract to ensure continued optimum performance of the thickening centrifuges to support the Jackson Pike wastewater treatment plant processes. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Ordinance 3245-2018, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into an agreement with Carpenter-Marty Transportation Incorporated for professional engineering services for the Broad Street and No Bixby Road and Jason Way and Knights Bridge Street Lighting Improvements Projects for the Division of Power, to authorize the transfer and expenditure of up to $186,366.09 within the Electricity General Obligation Bonds Fund and to authorize an amendment to the 2018 capital improvement budget. These two projects are from a total of eight. The Division of Power advertised them under the 2018 streetlight design project. The proposed streetlights will incorporate LED technology that will generate savings and electric energy and long-term maintenance costs. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Ordinance 3303-2018, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter a contract with Robert Service Group for the Electric Power Systems Maintenance Services for the Division of Sewerage and Drainage and the Division of Power, and to authorize the expenditure of $326,921 from the Sanitary Sewer Operating Fund and $300,000 from the Electricity Operating Fund. The work to be performed under these specifications will be electric power distribution systems and its components that require studies performed, inspection, testing, maintenance, repair, and/or replacement, with the majority of the work to be on industrial equipment systems. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Ordinance 3304-2018, to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to establish a contract with FIDA Freightliner Columbus Incorporated for the purchase of two crew trucks for the Department of Public Utilities, Division of Water, and to authorize the expenditure of $489,908 from the Water Operating Fund. The crew trucks will be used by the Division of Water to service water hydrants and water distribution lines. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second. Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
And the final ordinance we have in Public Utilities is ordinance 3393-2018. I thought that would get an applause. To authorize the Director of Public Utilities to modify and increase the contract with Ask Blue Tree Expert LLC for the power line clearance, tree trimming, and removal services for the Division of Power, and to authorize the expenditure of $150,000 from the Electricity Operating Fund. This service contract provides power line clearance, tree trimming, and removal services[1780.23] This service contract provides power line clearance, tree trimming, and removal services associated with the maintenance of the city's electric distribution system and related infrastructure throughout the Department of Public Utilities. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Paige, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
And if we could go back to rules, President Harden?
Please.
Or do you want to wait? In rules, we have ordinance three three eight six dash twenty eighteen to enact Columbus City Code Sections one oh seven point oh two, one oh seven point oh three, one oh seven point oh four, and one seventy point oh five regarding contribution limits for municipal candidates, campaign finance disclosure, disclosure for election, period communications, and new duties for the city clerk and city attorney, and fines and felonies for violation of the new code and to repeal existing Columbus City Code Section twenty-three twenty-one point five three. As my colleagues are aware, it's going to be our intention to table this ordinance so we can have additional hearing. That hearing will be held on Thursday, January third, twenty nineteen, at five-thirty here in chambers. But prior to making that motion, we do have three speakers this evening. Our first speaker is Nicole Butler. And following Nicole, we'll have Stephen David.
Hello, my name's Nicole Butler. I'm here representing Yes We Can. I did want to express my gratitude to you for delaying the vote on the campaign finance reform legislation that was originally scheduled for this evening. I think that was the right thing for the people of Columbus, and I do appreciate it. A few months ago, I was right here speaking and shared that I was concerned that if the city didn't act quickly to protect the housing of low-income residents, there would be rapid upheaval in many neighborhoods. And I do very much appreciate the efforts of Councilmember Page on that front. But as I'm sure many of you know, it's too late for many neighborhoods. And there are blocks and blocks of families who have already lost stable, safe housing to make room for what I remember being referred to as workforce housing. That's something that I expect some of your constituents wanted very badly and something that was quite bad for many others. I also recall Councilmember Brown explaining at that time that the city can't stop gentrification, but if you don't mind me quoting what you said earlier this evening, you incentivize the outcomes you want. I bring this up in the course of addressing campaign finance reform because I think you have an opportunity right now. Last spring, the Dispatch reported that more than sixty percent of campaign donations in Columbus come from just four percent of donors. That four percent is only a tiny fraction of your constituents. The way you handle campaign finance reform going forward is a chance for you to demonstrate that you represent the interests of all your constituents and that you do listen to struggling families on the South Side as closely as you listen to the wishes of that four percent. So as I said, I am grateful for you to reconsidering that plan to make a decision on that legislation tonight. It's a very complicated issue, and the public needs more than ten days to understand what's at stake. I have two further requests. I'm wondering if you would please share with us what the new timeline is, first of all. And second, I know that we shared that Yes We Can was conducting a public opinion poll on campaign finance. We have a couple hundred responses at this point, and the results are pretty unequivocal. People do want a limit that's lower than thirteen thousand dollars. But that said, I think, you know, in a city with almost a million people, depending on the outcome of this decision, it shouldn't be based on a Survey Monkey poll, probably. Will you conduct a survey, an independent survey, and find out what the will of your constituents truly is? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Butler. Next up, we have Stephen David, followed by Marion Harris.
My name is Stephen David. I live at one six six East Welch Avenue, four three two oh seven. Dear Council President Harden, President Pro Tem Stenziano, and members of council, my name is Steve David, and I am a social worker here in Columbus, living in Marion Village. I do really appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight, even though this is being tabled for a later date, as I asked my wife to cancel her plans to watch our baby, and that is a request that I do not like to make often. In short, I oppose council's campaign finance proposal because I feel that it sends a message to Columbus residents that their voices are not valued in municipal politics. It provides evidence for feelings of disenfranchisement that many people cite as the reason for staying home on Election Day. For the past year, I've been engaged in a national campaign to promote voter engagement amongst social workers and helping professionals. We train social workers and human service providers to have conversations with their clients about getting registered to vote and provide educational resources so people can make decisions that reflect their values at the ballot box. We do this work not only because it aligns with our ethical obligations to social justice and client self-determination, but because the data shows that voting supports people's health. People who vote are happier, have lower risks of mental health problems, and have greater access to services that promote overall health. States where more low-income people vote pass fewer restrictions on their eligibility for public benefits, spend more money on children's health insurance, and have higher minimum wages. However, especially in our local elections, nonparticipation is the norm rather than the exception. In the twenty seventeen general election, the last time that members of council were up for election, only twenty percent of registered voters in the city of Columbus cast a ballot. When we ask people why they don't vote, the national data shows that feeling that their vote doesn't matter is the second most common response that people give. For those of us doing work around engaging infrequent and disenchanted voters, we often point to the importance of local elections. I will tell those who feel turned off by what they see in national politics to look down the ballot to find people who are from their neighborhoods, who care about the issues that matter to their community, and whose decisions impact them immediately. I feel that this campaign finance proposal places a significant asterisk on this claim I've been making, codifying a broad suspicion that the wealthy are pulling the strings of our political process. I feel that council's campaign finance proposal sends a very clear signal about whose voices are valued in Columbus politics. The amount that would be allowed for individual contributions is an unimaginable sum for most of the residents of this city. And especially for those whose voices are already marginalized in so many spaces, this figure puts up another signpost that municipal government is also a space reserved for those of means. I agree that disclosure requirements and contribution limits are good and necessary action for council to take at this time. However, I would ask that members of council do something bold and pass an ordinance that values the democratic process and makes participation in electoral politics accessible for all of our neighbors. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Ms. Marion Harris.
Chairman Harden, members of council, thank you so much for taking up the topic of campaign finance reform. It's a topic long overdue on all levels of government. And having been a candidate three times and having had to raise money, I can speak from personal experience. I'd also like to thank you for agreeing to table this proposal until you've gathered sufficient public input. Comprehensive campaign finance reform is crucial to ensuring our elections aren't controlled by big-money donors. I think we can all agree how critical it is that we take the time to get this right. My other concern is the campaign donation limits. You have chosen to set the limit to correspond to the state limit. That's apples to oranges. Why not look at other cities, apples to apples, and set a limit similar to theirs? Columbus is a state, is not a state, it's a city. I believe Columbus's contribution limit should be comparable to other cities of equal size and at a level that allows all people to have an opportunity to have their contributions have a voice. Cleveland has a limit of five thousand dollars for an individual. Cincinnati's individual limit is one thousand one hundred dollars. Akron, six hundred and fifty dollars for an out-large and four hundred for Ward. Pittsburgh, twenty-seven hundred dollars for an individual. And I could go on and on, but I won't. I'm also here tonight to ask that you give voters a real chance to weigh in on this proposal. You recently put out a survey asking for feedback on the arts ticket tax proposal, and you received over twenty-five hundred responses. And I really appreciate that you spent several months listening to the public and intentionally applying that feedback. That, to me, demonstrates true leadership and excellent governance. So tonight, I ask you, will you commit to do the same thing for this critical reform? Will you make an effort to gather feedback from at least twenty-five hundred constituents? While holding more public hearings is a good first step, we all know that those hearings are largely inaccessible for many working families, people who work later than six P.M., people who can't afford the bus or gas money, families with children, students with stressful study schedules, and many more. Public participation is crucial to a strong democracy. By committing to surveying the public on this issue, you will demonstrate that you're genuine in your interest to listen to the wants and needs of working families. I know there are plenty of independent organizations in Columbus that are entirely capable of designing and implementing a survey to determine what the greater public believes are appropriate donation limits. I thank you for the opportunity to present testimony on this very important topic. And I hope I'm the last one, and you can all go home.
Look behind you.
Sorry, I thought. Anyway, thank you all very much.
Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you, Chairman Stenziano. And certainly, this legislation is being tabled, and I'm not going to speak to that. But I do want to speak to the point that a couple of the speakers, when they were here, I felt as though you were saying that individuals don't have a voice, and they don't have a voice to be able to talk with this body. And so we work for the residents of our community, and it is not determined by how much money they have. If you're a resident of this community, you can contact any of us anytime around any issues. And I think it's really important to say that because I know that, just listening, it almost appeared from the conversation that you only have access if you have a certain amount of money. And that is just not true. So I would say to the speakers that came up to the podium tonight, if the individual that you're working with, from the individual that was a social worker, that please contact our offices, any issues and concerns that the individuals that you are caring for, to let us know what those issues and concerns are. And I would think despite this, by this council meeting tonight, you have heard us as a body, you know, thinking about the raising of minimum wage. You know, we're working on issues that we understand that there are a third of the people in our community don't have access to different services, and we understand that, and we're working with the administration. But I just wanted to make sure that we did not, people did not leave here thinking that it's only about people who donate money that we care about, because that's the furthest thing from who we are as elected officials. If you live in Columbus and work in Columbus, we work for you every single day. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from my colleagues? I do want to thank you all for the feedback. I know we were discussing just how to implement this with municipal elections next year and what would be the best timeframe, so there was something in place where we have no limits now. This was moving that ball in that direction. But really enjoyed our dialogue, President Harden's leadership and discussion as well. And so with that, I'm going to recommend that we move to table this ordinance indefinitely.
Brown, Brown, Paige, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Ordinance is tabled.
And as I shared before, we will have a public hearing on Thursday, January third, twenty nineteen, at five-thirty P.M. here in council chambers. And as always, the public can reach me or any one of us at any time on this important issue. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Chair Stenziano. Thank you for your leadership. I think you hit on it right, and I look forward to hearing additional feedback from the public on the third. But we do want to move because we do think it's time for campaign finance reform in the city of Columbus. So thank you for your leadership. The next committee to come before council is the Health and Human Services Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Tyson. Councilmember Flora, yours.
Thank you. I have ordinance thirty-two thirty-seven dash two thousand eighteen to authorize and direct the Board of Health to accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Health in the amount of sixty-three thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars for the dental sealant program that prevents dental cavities among schoolchildren through an evidence-based community approach. To authorize appropriation of sixty-three thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars from the unappropriated balance of the Health Department's grants fund. The dental sealant program is to prevent dental cavities among schoolchildren through an evidence-based community approach. The evidence, the program targets high-risk schools in order to reach high-risk children, and the program currently serves students in second, third, sixth, and seventh grades. These funds will allow approximately twenty-eight hundred students in Franklin County to be served per year. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Paige, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is thirty-three fifty-seven dash two thousand eighteen. to authorize and direct the Board of Health to accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Health for the Creating Healthy Communities Grant Program in the amount of one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars and to authorize the appropriation of one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to the Health Department and the Health Department's grants fund and to declare an emergency. This grant will utilize population-based strategies to address healthy eating, active living, and smoke-free living with the goal of reducing chronic disease. These dollars will be used to support residents in Linden South, the South Side, Franklinton Hilltop. The total population served will be two hundred and seventy-six thousand forty-two people. They will increase food access by continuing to plan and implement farmers' markets in neighborhoods that do not have convenient access to healthy foods. Also, we'll implement the Ohio Healthy Program, which provides technical assistance to childcare centers to adopt policies that will support healthy menu options for children served. And funding will also increase physical activity opportunities for residents through physical environmental changes to support active transportation in the neighborhoods. In addition, Columbus Public Health will provide education to community residents about the harmful effects of tobacco use and second-hand smoke exposure. Staff will offer technical assistance to multi-unit housing property managers to implement successful smoke-free lease options. And staff will also identify tobacco policy targets that support Tobacco Twenty-One, such as a point-of-sale policies. This legislation is important to me because of the work, the Local Food Action Plan, and the goal of increasing healthy food, affordable food, and local food. Specifically, this year, I funded the Linden Farmers Market and further council-supported programs for the local matters, school-based education programs that promote healthy eating for children. And lastly, in addition, this legislation aligns with my efforts to curb tobacco use. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Paige, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
For the final ordinance, Health and Human Services, I'm going to ask for Michael Baldi, the manager of the Desert Island Club, and Kevin Phillips, the chairman of the board, to walk towards the podium, please. And this legislation is to approve the funding request for the Desert Island Club, a nonprofit 501(c)(3) seeking financial assistance to address an emergency human service need pursuant to Columbus City Code to authorize the Director of Development to execute a grant agreement with the Desert Island Club to replace the roof on its building, to authorize expenditure of thirty-five thousand four hundred and forty dollars from the Emergency Human Services Fund and to declare an emergency. So Michael and Kevin, if you would just share some information about the Desert Island Club and its importance to our community.
Sure. Good evening, council. My name is Kevin Phillips, and I am the chairman of the board of the Desert Island Club. And what we are is a 501(c)(3) charity that, our mission statement is we are strictly to help the recovering community. And how we do that is we offer a facility, clean and sober, for meetings and social events. We have thirty thousand people come through our doors a year strictly for meetings and recovery. We're open seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Through the holidays, we're open twenty-four seven, from Christmas Eve until New Year's Day, to give that community a recovery facility that they can go to at a time of need. What we're asking for is for the roof on our facility because it is an original roof from the sixties. It has been patched numerous times. Unfortunately, it's a flat roof, a flat rubber roof, which takes a special thing to do. And we've had people come through that's tried to patch it, and they did what they could for the age of it. But unfortunately, you know, it's met its end. And some of the council members have been there, they've seen the facility, and, you know, we do a community service. I mean, you know, with the opioid epidemic and everything that's going on right now, they go through treatment, and then they're out on the streets, and it's the aftercare, the recovery, that that's where we offer that. You know, they can come after they get out of recovery, and they've got a place to come to and get support and help. That's how we help the community. And, you know, we offer holiday meals for people and... Yeah, you know, and it's not just for recovery people. I mean, anybody can... I mean, anybody can come through our doors, and we welcome them there. We have, yearly, we have the Dave Baker AIDS Foundation comes through our facility and offers free HIV and hepatitis treatment, you know, or testing for the community, you know, and we try to do for anybody that we will help them out, and that's what we're there for. And, you know, we're asking for the grant, because we are a 501(c)(3), and we've got limited funds, and our entire work staff is all volunteer. And to be open now, you know, seven days a week, 365 days a year, on strictly volunteers, it's saying something about, you know, what we do. And we've been in business over 35 years, and so we're not going anywhere. We're there to help the community, and that's why we're asking for the funds.
That's good.
Well, I certainly wanted to say thank you. Certainly, we know we have an opioid epidemic in our community, and so for the past 30 years, you've been working with individuals within our community, and so we appreciate your work. I know you have 12-step meetings there, and as you've mentioned, you've served about 30,000 individuals that have come through your organization. And so, with that in mind, I know Councilmember Sensiano has been out to your facility, my staff certainly have been out also, and just appreciate the work that you're doing in our community to be open 365 days and give people a safe place to come to celebrate the holidays without using drugs or alcohol. So, Councilmember Sensiano?
There are no questions or comments for my colleagues. I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Sensiano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I'd like to move to Rules and Reference.
Please.
Thank you. I have one ordinance, and Rules and Reference is ordinance 32-58-2018 to adopt a new combined development-related fee schedule for the Departments of Building and Zoning Services, Public Service, and Public Safety be effective January the 14th of 2019, and to amend the City Code 3381.17 relating to the sign, erector license fees. And so, the Building and Zoning Services had a hearing on this fee schedule on November the 14th, and I'm going to now ask Director Messer to make some comments on the fee changes. Director, the floor is yours.
Councilmember Tyson, President Harden, other members of council, thank you. All of the fees related to permits, zoning, contractor licenses, and other development-related fees are set out and codified in City Code through our fee schedule. Those fees and the fee schedule are typically revisited every five years to determine any changes that might be necessary. The fees support development activities and fund the Department of Building and Zoning Services 100%. We are not general fund agency. Five years ago, we made some small changes, but overall, fees actually went down in the last time that we visited the fee schedule. So, it's been a decade since we've recommended any fee increase. Given that, for 2019, we are recommending fee increases that would result in an overall increase of approximately 15% over the next five years. That being said, we are recommending that many of our fees, particularly for residential applicants, small businesses, and zoning-related fees, to all go down and decrease, with most of the fee increases impacting larger commercial projects. These changes were based on an analysis of permit fees in comparable cities, as well as permit fees as a percent of cost of construction. We engaged, as you mentioned, the development community, including groups like the BIA and the AGC, Association of General Contractors, to review and evaluate these changes. We also had the public hearing that you mentioned, and based on that input and our evaluation, you have the recommended fee schedule before you. I'd like to thank the Department of Finance, Mayor's Office, and you, Councilmember Tyson, and your staff for the assistance and support in putting this legislation forward, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Director Messer? Okay. Saying none. Again, we hadn't had an increase in 10 years, and so, again, I thank you for your leadership and your team, Director Messer, for proposing this fee schedule. I know you have done a lot of research, and so I thank you for your leadership. Saying no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Sensiano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. That's all I have in my committees this evening.
Thank you, Chair Tyson. Seeing no further business coming before council, just joking. We're going to move to the Rules and Reference Committee. I have ordinance 33-78-2018 and ordinance 33-79-2018. Just for a little background, on September 17th, the GCAC presented to this council a reasonable idea, an arts fee. We have spent the last three months listening to the Columbus community. I would like to start off with a few thank yous, certainly to Tom Katzenmeyer and to Don Brown, to President Drake in OSU, to Mr. Jim Lohmer, who sent a letter to this council today acknowledging his support for this ordinance, to Dr. Scott Myers in the Quarter Horse Congress, to Mr. Priest in the Blue Jackets. Each and every one of those folks' input has been extremely valuable and has shaped the outcome in this final piece of legislation. I also want to thank my team, my chief of staff, Mike Brown, and Zach Davison, who have fielded many of the 2,500 calls and emails, to Matt Erickson on our team, who has worked diligently to work and rework these ordinances to get us to where we are here today. I also want to thank two of my council members, Councilmember Priscilla Tyson and Mike Sensiano, whose service on the GCAC Board led for invaluable guidance and information as we thought through and listened to the public. So, what are these ordinances? We're going to do two big things. One, the first ordinance creates the Creativity Fund, increasing inclusion and access for families. And I, right there, like to say that just this week, I circled back around and talked to Tom Katzenmeyer. We have two funds, the Creativity and the Stability Fund, but really, there is an overarching theme that I want everybody in the arts community to understand from this council, that by passing these ordinances, we are hoping and expect that the great diversity and inclusion that we see in our community is expressed through the support and usage of these grants. We have a saying, I definitely stole it from the Pittsburgh Smart Cities Grant, "If it's not for all, it's not for us." We would not be passing this ordinance if it was not for all. This grant will double, nearly double, the amount of resources to artists, to small arts groups, and to our great festivals. The second ordinance creates the Stability Fund, and that's to protect public buildings, including Nationwide Arena, COSI, the King Arts Complex, the Lincoln Theater, and Franklin Park Conservatory. Nationwide Arena attracts national events, conventions, and conferences and performances, and we own it, so if it breaks, the community already has to find ways to fix it. So, it's important to note that the Stability Fund gets revenue solely from the Nationwide Arena ticket sales, and makes it clear that no other venues' revenue will be spent on the needs of our civic arena. Eighty percent of this fund will support that building's capital needs, while the remaining 20% will be awarded to other cultural buildings through competitive grants administered by GCAC. We are lowering the rate to 5% to help protect the many local and national businesses presenting shows here in Columbus. Based on community feedback, we've made several changes to the exemptions. We have adjusted the nonprofit exemption so that labor groups and trade associations like the Chamber of Commerce will not be affected. Furthermore, fundraising events by nonprofit organizations will not be impacted by this law, since that is not consistent with the spirit of this ordinance. We've also adjusted the effective date so that organizations that will charge the fee can adequately prepare. That date is July 1st, 2019. The aforementioned changes will be made to the ordinance tonight in the form of an amendment submitted to the clerk. I believe this is a fair plan, a bold plan, and a realistic plan that addresses the biggest concerns of our residents and our stakeholders. I would also, I mentioned OSU and the support that OSU voluntarily put into this. As a council, we're very grateful for them stepping up, but also to our colleagues at the county commission for their diligent work as they work through their budget process and find ways to be supportive of this work as well. At this point, I would like to provide my colleagues an opportunity to say a few words. Sure, Councilmember Tyson?
I'm certainly in support of the two ordinances that we're going to pass, hopefully pass, tonight, and that I do want to just say thank you to, just to Tom, the team of GCAC, the Board of GCAC, all the partners that have provided input, all the nonprofit organizations that have provided input for this legislation. I want to thank, I see Don Brown in the back, I want to thank the county commissioners. This is a long time coming, and I have been on this council, in January, be 12 years. Prior to even coming to this council, it was always that we needed more funds to support the arts organizations. And so, tonight, hopefully, the passage of this, these two pieces of legislation will assist our arts organizations and our artists to be able to continue to move forward and expand their services. It is so important that we have the arts in our community, because the arts equal economic development. When you think about, and they also enhance individuals' quality of life, the arts organizations today that, who have shared information with us have all committed to making sure that they are going to be working with our community, the children in our community, and helping people to all appreciate the arts. And so, we cannot have a thriving community without a vibrant arts community. Individuals, when you think about wanting to attract and retain jobs in our community, the only way they're going to do that is through really enhancing the overall quality of life, because people could go and work really almost anywhere they want. What makes a difference is their overall quality of life. And so, this is just another tool in our tool chest to ensure that we have, that we continue to have a growing and thriving city. And so, again, Council President Harden, for my council colleagues, this has been a long time coming. I can just, and so, I thank this council for being the body to be able to make this happen, and again, I thank the efforts of the leadership of GCAC in this community. And I also echo President Harden's comments about, that we definitely, this is a community that we say is an opportunity city for all. We're a diverse city, and we need to make sure that the arts looks like who our city is, and we will certainly be watching to make sure that that happens. And so, I am in total support of this legislation. It is key and critical to the success of our city. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. With that, we have three public speakers on this ordinance. The first speaker is one of the city's top CEOs from CEO Magazine, Dr. Frederick Bertley, Congratulations, Dr. Bertley, on that designation. Welcome to council.
Thank you for your vote in making that happen, President Harden. Appreciate it. My name is Frederick Bertley, president and CEO of COSI. President Harden and council members, thank you for allowing me this opportunity to address you. We are at a point of inflection, as Malcolm Gladwell refers to, a tipping point. Tonight's decision will determine if we want Columbus to advance to the pinnacle of a modern, truly open, accessible society, and be the best city for our citizens and visitors alike. In science, we look for verifiable truths. In short, we are data-driven. Honorable council members, the data is clear. In Columbus, the arts are underfunded. Why does it matter? When the arts are successfully funded, our region is more appealing to businesses, as was mentioned by Councilwoman Tyson, and we can attract new talent and provide more educational opportunities, all of which contribute to a more vibrant and healthy society for our residents. At COSI, our mission is to engage, inspire, and transform lives and communities. We do this through outreach programs, including field trips to under-resourced schools, our access program where tens of thousands come to COSI for free, or with COSI on Wheels, where we actually go to their Columbus communities. Our Every Fifth Grader program, giving Columbus Public School children access to COSI, as well as hands-on experiences for their classroom. And the COSI Science Festival, bringing free experiences around science and technology, career paths, to our citizens where they live, learn, and lounge. COSI serves families in Franklinton, Linden, South Side, King Arts District, AKA Brownsville, and I'm proud that I know where Brownsville is, the Hilltop, and the list goes on and on. As a nonprofit, COSI provides over $700,000 to fund these opportunities for under-resourced Columbus communities. But this is just COSI, and I'm here tonight to add a voice to the more than 50 arts and civic organizations and 2,000-plus citizen coalition members who support the ticket fee proposal in front of you. Indeed, the collective impact is colossal, yet the price to achieve this impact, the ticket fee, is comparatively negligible. So, the data is clear, but if economic development and cultural accessibility are not your thing, consider this. There is far less infant mortality in populations in communities that have high levels of cultural literacy than communities that do not, and levels of violent crime, including homicide, are much lower in populations that have a deep understanding of the Da Vinci or Harlem Renaissance, have a knowledge base of Kudinsky and Cédené, possess a vocabulary that includes Monet and Matisse, can play a Steinway or Stradivarius, and are familiar with Tanner, Jay-Z, and Queen B. You see, whether it's Miles, Michael, or Mozart, a culturally literate populace leads to a more vibrant and refined society. This is true of history and is certainly true here today. So, as the French are famous for saying, la noblesse oblige, meaning our nobleness obliges us to act honorably and generously to others. This ticket tax is a small fee for something so largely important. It behooves us to support it. After all, it's the Columbus way.
Thank you, Dr. Bertley. The next speaker to come before council is Rebecca Vance-Coyne.
Good evening, President Harden and city council members. My name is Becky Coyne, and I am a proud teacher for Columbus City Schools. I am an art teacher, but I am here representing the arts and STEM educators who work for Columbus City Schools. At a time where teacher support has hit a low, the Columbus Museum of Art and our other arts partners are our biggest champions. We are in this together. I love my job. Teaching for Columbus City Schools has been one of the best parts of my life. Besides my awesome students, one of the highlights of my career has been working closely with the Columbus Museum of Art, in a partnership with the museum and our schools. Until this past year, I worked directly with the organization for 18 years to bring our students to the museum and to bring the museum to our students. While the budget cuts were hard on CCS this year, this stopped because of the money, the partnership. When the budget cuts happened, the impact was felt not just for Columbus City Schools, but it was also felt on the side of the museum. Why? Because our hands were tied, as were theirs. There was not enough money on either side to continue our established programs. Here's some data. Last year, as has happened for more than 20 years, over 5,000 fifth graders visited the Columbus Museum of Art for an intensive field trip. Their field trip is part of our nearly 50-year partnership with the CMA and has grown each year under the wings of the CMA Education Department. This year, that number will be down dramatically because of our budget cuts. Last year, 75 of our 110 art teachers were involved in a voluntary learning cohort, which directly worked with the Columbus Museum of Art. Those 75 teachers taught approximately 27,633 students last year, imparting the knowledge of our 21st century creativity that they gained through working with the Columbus Museum of Art. Due to budget cuts, we are not doing the same this year. We are four months into the school year, and the effects are already being felt across the district. Partnership with the museum is critical to our successes in the classroom. Money accrued from the proposed ticket fees will allow the community of the Columbus Museum of Art and Columbus City Schools and other arts organizations to continue to partner to instill in our teachers and our 49,351 students 21st century learning skills. The needs in CCS are continually growing, and the Columbus Arts and Education Groups always, always, dig in and find a way to do more. They care about our success because they care deeply about our kids. They're there. They're there when many corporations and organizations are not. We hear all the time that the successes of our schools will make a big impact in the economic development of the city, the ability to help retain talent and revitalize our neighborhoods. But who rolls up their sleeves and helps us? Our arts partners. This spring, our partnership will have our 8th Annual CCS CMA Free Day for Families. Many of you in this room have been to that magnificent event. If you haven't attended this day of celebration, let me tell you what it looks like. It looks like the nine-year-old boy that has come here with his family to share in his arts events. It looks like the inner-city child that has ridden two buses with his family in their Sunday best to have this wonderful experience at the museum. It looks like the kid that has to translate for his family because they are deaf, or maybe they are English as a second language, but they're there to support the arts. And I know I'm way over my time, so thank you very much.
Thank you.[1368.11][1368.11](Applause). And the last speaker on this ordinance is Ms. Kristi Angel. Ms. Angel, welcome back to council.
I have a long history, very long history, supporting arts in Columbus as a volunteer, a patron, and currently as a GCAC trustee. Your willingness to compromise on this issue is greatly appreciated. The result is a very reasonable fee. For example, only an additional $1.75 on a $25 ticket. Small investments made by many individuals that together will make a much greater positive impact on our community. In my current role as the President and CEO of YWCA Columbus, and in much of my life's work, I have focused on social justice. Although one might not think at first blush that the arts and the creative industry play a role in social justice work, in fact, they do. They bring great value and impact to the nonprofit social service industry. The arts and creative industry are a part of our industry's history. They help raise awareness of the issues we are trying to solve, the people we aim to serve, and the community we attempt to build, and at times rebuild. The creative industry helps raise a social consciousness, and it promotes social change. Often, we, the YWCA and others, partner and collaborate with one another as a motivator and partner with the arts as a motivator of stakeholders to engage in action around an issue. Or, social service practitioners use art and artists to help our constituents move beyond what may be holding them back. Just one example for YWCA Columbus is in our Women's Residency Program. We often partner with individual artists, arts organizations, and students from the Columbus College of Art and Design. They teach art classes as an alternative to the destructive forms of self-expression some women face. This vote today is important as it is, as it will improve access to the arts and arts education programming for all, protect and grow Columbus's creative industry, and help deliver results for social justice issues and organizations like the one I lead that are critically important to our community. Thank you. Thank you for your support. Please vote yes.[1562.24][1562.24](Applause).
Thank you, Ms. Angel. Just one more final point. I just wanted to thank a couple more people. City Attorney Klein, your team, your office, support and reviewing and helping us with the amendments and giving us the universe of what is legal, what we're able to do, we greatly appreciate. To the mayor and his team for the work that they have done, just even the last several days. Tonight's agenda is a true representation of the thing that a lot of folks call cliche, which is the Columbus way. When we see an issue or an opportunity to make our community better, we roll up our sleeves and we do it together, including the private sector. The private sector stepped up too on this. And so, are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I first would move to amend as amended by the clerk by voice. A second? Please call the roll by voice.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Paige?
Yes.
Remy?
Yes.
Stenziano?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes. It's amended. Now, I'll move for passage. Is there a second?
Second.
For ordinance 3378-2018.
By voice.
By voice.
Ms. Brown?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Paige?
Yes.
Remy?
Yes.
Stenziano?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes. Ordinance 3378 passes. The next ordinance is ordinance 3379-2018. I move to amend as amended to the clerk by voice. Please call the roll by voice.
Ms. Brown?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Paige?
Yes.
Remy?
Yes.
Stenziano?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes. Ordinance is passes. Congratulations.[1706.12][1706.12](Applause). Just want to say to the directors and to the community, we, on behalf of this council, we wish you a happy holidays and a happy new year. To this community, we say please have a safe, safe holiday, and we will see everyone back here in chambers on January 14. Yeah, I want to. And with that, I move, can I get a motion for adjournment? To adjourn. Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Paige, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Meeting is adjourned. We have two speakers.